Good evening, everyone. We call it well tonight. Mrs. Gallion is not here and Mr. Kofel is on his way here. And with that, we have moved to Ms. Viola for retiree recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. This is always a highlight, but it's bittersweet, obviously, because we're saying goodbye to some of our fantastic teachers. And so this evening, I'm just going to read a few sentences about each teacher. And we ask that you come up, and we have some support staff as well, come up and receive your clock. And so I will, I will read first about Nancy Albright. Nancy began her career at Ringing Rocks in 1976, and she's been teaching there ever since. And during that time, she served as the grade level coordinator, worked on several committees, and has been the girls' field hockey coach at both the high school and the middle school for many years. Nancy's looking forward to spending time with her family and being able to support them when they need help. And she's also being, she's looking forward to being able to make any appointment anytime she wishes. Congratulations to Nancy. Rich has been a special education teacher at the middle school since 1980. His quiet determination to help his students be the best they can be has been an inspiration to many. Rich loves sports, and he's worked as the high school golf coach, as well as the girls' softball coach for several years. And Rich is looking forward to retirement and spending time remodeling a home he recently purchased. I hope to see Rich at Mandarac, walking the trail. Congratulations, Rich. She's known in every building from her years as a parent and a substitute teacher. Barb officially joined the district as a contracted teacher at the middle school in 1997. She served as the middle school memory book advisor for many years, as well as serving as a department coordinator for social studies. Barb looks forward to spending lots of time with her family. Congratulations to Barb. Cindy began her Potts Grove... Thank you, Barb. Next is Cindy Faust. Cindy began her Potts Grove career in 1980 at the high school. She moved to the middle school two years, for two years, and returned to the high school in 2000. During her years in the district, she taught music classes at all levels, directed hundreds of students in different choral groups, assisted the high school musicals, and has been a chairman of the Homecoming for many years. She plans to continue her current position as director of the music ministry at the First Presbyterian Church of Pottstown, and she will travel. She's looking forward to having the time to play the piano and sing without preparing a lesson plan. Congratulations to Cindy. Lucy's been a support staff employee in the district since 2001. Her coworkers at Ringing Rocks describe her as someone who's always upbeat and great with the students. She has a wonderful sense of humor, which has come in handy on more than one occasion. After retirement, she will be very busy with plans for her granddaughter's wedding in September. She also plans on spending time in the sun, sand, and surf in Cape May, New Jersey this summer. Congratulations to Lucy. She, she hasn't made it, but we'll congratulate her anyway. Is Al here?
No.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read about Al anyway. Al Reed was initially hired as a long-term substitute at the middle school in 1978. After one year, he was offered a contract and has been teaching at the middle school ever since, with concentration in science and math. Respected by his peers, Al was also a team coordinator for many years. He coached the middle school baseball and football team and was often seen working with our student athletes. When asked what he's doing, looking forward to doing when he retires, he responded three things that came to mind: spending more time with his grandson, traveling with his wife, and doing a lot more fishing. Congratulations to Al. Lynn. Lynn Reichenbach. After starting for a very short time as a day-to-day substitute, Lynn was hired as a kindergarten teacher at Ringing Rocks in 1987. She's currently a kindergarten teacher at West Potts Grove. Through the years, Lynn has been known for her soft-spoken, loving support to our first-year students. She's warm and caring and always puts the child first. When asked about her plans after retirement, Lynn said she was looking forward to many things, but mostly having time to do all the things she hasn't been able to do while teaching. Immediately upon retirement, she'll be helping for the final preparation of her daughter's wedding, and a week later, enjoying a trip on her husband, no, really, on her, for her husband, to Hawaii. Congratulations to Lynn Reichenbach. Linda is another teacher who started as a substitute in 1997, before being hired as a contracted reading specialist in 1999. And as an elementary reading specialist, Linda has always shown support to our assistance for our reading program. Her ability to remain calm and professional is very impressive. In her creative way, Linda spelled out her retirement plans. R is for relaxing at the end of August. E is for early days on my terms. T is for time to play, plan for the unexpected. I is for interests that are mine alone. R is for reading books that I want to read. E is for enjoying weekends in the Poconos. M is making time to play games. E is entertaining friends on weeknights. N is nutrient-filled meals that are delicious. And T is taking walks at nine o'clock in the morning. Congratulations, Linda. And we have a couple of other retirees that weren't able to join us this evening, but I definitely want to read a little bit about each one of those. Elaine Armstrong is, is Elaine Armstrong, and she's all over the district. She's been, began her career as a substitute teacher at West Potts Grove before moving to Ringing Rocks as a contracted teacher the following year. She's currently the elementary gifted teacher, a position she has held for the past several years. She's been a member of several committees, including the technology committee, staff development committee, and she's looking forward to traveling with her husband. So congratulations to Elaine, who couldn't be here with us this evening. Additionally, we have Sharon Bradbury. Sharon decided to make a career change and returned to college, graduating in 2001. She joined Potts Grove as an elementary teacher the following year. She's worked at both Ringing Rocks and Lower Potts Grove during her time with the district, and she's looking forward to spending time relaxing with her family. We have two more. Gwyneth Jensen. Gwyneth began her teaching career at a neighboring Boyertown School District before joining Potts Grove in 1996. She initially taught elementary art until move, before moving to the high school several years ago. She's used her talents to paint many of the sets and, that were used for the wonderful drama productions in the district. Gwyneth and her husband recently became proud parents of a baby boy, and she's looking forward to spending time at home with him and the rest of her family. Congratulations to Gwyneth. And last but not least, Judy Sidebottom. Judy has been with us since 1974, taught both special and regular education at the elementary level. The last several years, she's taught fifth grade at Lower Potts Grove Elementary. She served as a grade level coordinator and has sponsored many activities, such as after-school clubs and safety patrol. She looks forward to traveling with her husband, Bill. She said while she will miss the smiles of her students and coworkers, she cannot wait to stay up late and look forward to never setting an alarm clock for the crack of dawn ever again. Congratulations to all the retirees.
Mr., just for kind of rearranging our agenda here a little bit, Mr. Steve Wenzel's here from Relay for Life, and we, to speak, we're going to allow him to speak before, before the presentation. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. On behalf of the Relay for Life, my name's Steve Wenzel. I'm the logistics chair. I think I've been in front of you guys for like the last nine years. And we continue to thank you for the support that you guys give us for the Relay for Life. This community still continues to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars each year, and we couldn't do it without your support. Still top ten in the world, and this year, we just crested the $10 million raise for the 18 years that we've been in the Relay for Life. So you guys have been a key part of that, and I hope to see you guys again next year.
Thank you.
As a survivor myself, I would like to thank you for all your, your push. We have to find a cure, and nothing warms my heart more than seeing we can open up and help you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to the renovation of the high school, and Mr. Hannah's here from Dewey Engineering to just give you an overview and show you some great pictures of some progress that, that we've made.
Hello, everyone. We've entered the phase that we've been talking about a long time. So right, right now, we have contractors working in the gym, finishing that up. There are contractors working in the cap, the old cafeteria, in the library, these LGI rooms, the addition of the cafeteria. And just as of yesterday, they started in the classroom wings. And if you walk through there today, you'd think there was a tornado in there. So you can see in the gym, a lot of the MEP finishes are in. It's trimmed out. You can see the dockwork, the lights are in, it's been painted. They're starting to put the athletic equipment in, the backboards, the curtains. The wood floor has arrived, and it's acclimating, getting ready for installation. In fact, the gym's the coolest place in the building right now. The exterior of the gym is, is moving along nicely. Pretty soon, you'll see some metal panels going up here and the trim finish being installed. The courtyard to the, to the gym is on grade, and you'll start seeing some finishes going on here, some brick and some limestone finishes. Of course, the athletic and team room is, is completed, and your students are using that, your athletic teams. That came out real nice, by the way. That's a nice room. The work in the boiler room has started. The old boilers have been removed, and your new high-efficiency boilers, which are in the back, are installed. Now, we haven't been able to fire them up yet, but the big next hurdle we got to get over is getting a new gas line in, and that started today. The exterior of the cafeteria is moving along nice. You can see the brick masonry's in, the wood's up, the sofas are in, metal panels will be going on, the glass has been installed. Interior finishes have started in that addition, as you can see. Roofing, insulation of the roof cap sheet has, has been progressing. And the thorn in all our sides is the kettle. And I just want to explain to you how this kettle works. So here is where they melt. They heat up the hot asphalt to adhere the base sheets and the cap sheet. And then it gets pumped up to the roof, and they put it in pots, and they wheel it to where they're working. Now, part of our requirements are they use no-smell asphalt, and if you see it, it says "no-smell asphalt." But this is what's called a vapor recovery machine, okay? So all the vapors that come off of this are trapped, come down this tube into this vapor recovery, and they go through a second burn to burn off all the vapors. The day we had the issue, it was a windy day. The wind blew down the exhaust and blew out the pilot of this vapor recovery, and you couldn't get it relit. And it just popped back. And the other thing was, they were working 10, 12-hour days that time to catch the roofing up. They were trying to work weekends. Of course, they couldn't work night because they're working 12-hour days, they wouldn't have any light. So they had moved the kettle late that night before they finished, moved it to an area where it was by the cafeteria, and they started it up very early in the morning. So between that going out and them moving the kettle to an area that we would have preferred it not be, we ended up with the incident we had. As you can see, through the changes we made, we let the contractors get into the existing cafeteria early. One of the things that had to be done with all these joists up here, above that suspended ceiling, had to be reinforced to take care of what's called drift. Drift is that cafeteria roof, the new, the addition, is higher than the existing roof. So we've all seen snow drift behind a high roof. So to compensate for that, these joists needed to be reinforced. And that's all of these joists, all of these right through here. So through the cafeteria and into the kitchen. And that involves welding steel on the pop cords of the joists and the bottom cords of the joists. It's a three-inch stitch weld, every six inches. So it's a tremendous amount of weld. Now, for the steel workers, the iron workers, when they encounter paint on a surface, they need to check it to make sure it doesn't contain lead, as OSHA requirements are for them as workers. So they take a simple pencil and swab that pencil across it. If it turns color, it contains lead, they use, they need to use PPGs, personal protection equipment. We, as your consulting and you, need to protect your environment. So we had to have that tested by your remediation consultant. And when he tested it, it had levels of lead higher than, or acceptable if the lead reaches above 1,500 degrees. So it had to be remediated. That involves containment, negative air, air monitoring, you know, the whole nine yards, to get the steel in this condition. So that was painted steel at one time. The remediation contractor, who was the low bidder, had to go in and sandblast all that paint off. And he had to do it very carefully, because if you could see, this is a gypsum deck. And this white area is where, you know, he got through some of the gypsum. Didn't damage it, other than aesthetically, but he needed to be very careful because the sandblad, he could go right through the roof. So very time-consuming, very tedious work. They used several different methods to find out which is the most cost-effective method, which is the most reasonable method, and it was sandblasting that was. So that's pretty much it.
We're on target?
Well, this has set us back a little bit. This has set us back a little bit. We did have work moving concurrently. I have a meeting tomorrow with the contractors to assess where we are with this, where this set us back, because because of the containment, we couldn't get into this area. And are we on target? It's hard to say. Are we way behind? I don't think so. Can we make it up? Probably. I mean, we need to work with that, work through it. Right now, I don't know. I can just tell you that, you know, that's, that disrupted our schedule, our plans.
So what happens if it does set us back beyond the summer schedule?
Well, there are two things we can do, okay? We can give them more time, okay, which is, is very unlikely. Or we can assess what additional times needed to make up the lost time and ask them to work overtime or triple time or whatever it takes. Okay? We do, based on the discussions we have earlier, we have a, a second plan where if we don't get, if we don't, oops, sorry. If we don't get this space, we can still go back to the way we were in May, serving in, in the auxiliary gym, but we'll have the kitchen. We need to get the classrooms done. Or we ask, we just assess where we are and get the contractors to get it done for us.
And roof, that's going to be done, for sure?
Yes. Wherever we can, as you can see, they, they brought a load of material over. The only, the only thing we need to work on is the addition that goes over here, the guidance addition. I don't think we'll be able to put a roof on that until the fall. So we're going to, we're going to try and get them to get that done over the weekend. I think we've all had enough of roofing during school.
I just wanted to take a minute to recognize one of our retirees that was able to join us a little bit late, Mr. Alan Reed. And Al, we read a whole bio about you. I'm going to read it again because I think it's important that, that you hear it, that Al was hired as a long-term sub at the middle school in 1978, and after one year, he was offered a contract and has been teaching at the middle school ever since, with concentration in science and math. Respected by his peers, he was also a team coordinator for many years, coached middle school baseball and football, and was often seen working with our student athletes. And when asked what he's looking forward to when he retires, he responded three things that came to mind: spending more time with his grandson, traveling with his wife, and doing a lot more fishing. And Al, we're certainly going to miss you. So congratulations.
You're on retiree time now.
I'd just like to say to Potts Grove family, I couldn't have picked a better spot to come. I enjoyed my years here. The people at Potts Grove are something special. And like I said, often said to everyone, I don't think I could have picked a better spot to work. It wasn't work. It was actually a pleasure. And I know I enjoyed many of your children. I enjoyed the administration. They've all been very kind to me, and I thank you for all these years. Thank you very much.
And, and Mr. Reed, before you leave, is it my understanding that we might have hired your granddaughter I met the other day? Was it your, or your niece?
It's actually my niece.
Your niece? Yeah. I had the pleasure, Dr. Shirk and I are interviewing her, and I believe she saw this agenda?
She, she called me right away.
Okay. We're going to move on to just a very brief presentation of our district comprehensive plan and superintendent goals update. And in your packet, and I sent home a previous week as well, a detailed synopsis of all of the things that we've accomplished this year, and that is what you'll see in orange in your handout on the left-hand side of your packet. And also in light blue, something that looks similar but slightly different in what we're proposing to move our goals forward and what our focal areas will be for the 15th, 16th school year. So as the directors come up and just make a few comments, you'll see what we've accomplished, but also what we'd like to do to move even further during the course next year. And it's, it's, it was a very extremely productive day for us. We had our administrative retreat today, and Mr. Voorhees organized that retreat with some of our teachers, actually. And we brought our teaching coaches and some teacher leaders. One was identified from each building that, to represent the building, with our administrative team, and we worked really hard to come together and collaborate about what our dreams are for the Potts Grove School District and how we can further our progress in, in moving the district forward to best serve the students of the district. So you'll see some of that come out today, and obviously, you know, we'll, we'll be embellishing that if you approve these, this focal area over the summer, so that we can gear up for starting that in the fall. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Voorhees.
Good evening. I'll be, is this on? Okay. Just as a quick review, we're going to review four district goals this evening, as well as superintendent's goals six and seven. So I have the distinct pleasure of talking a bit about goal number one and goal number two, and then we'll continue on through the evening, giving a brief update of where we have been with each and every one of the goals. So as we talk about goal number one, it's really all about our work in terms of creating a standards-aligned curriculum. So as you know, that's been ongoing work. So that includes a number of things that have occurred this year. At the elementary level, it's really been looking at our balanced literacy effort. So teachers have been working incredibly hard on guided reading, balanced literacy, shared reading. In particular, this year, they started with everybody implementing one unit of the new writing program that we'll have in place for all teachers next year. Full implementation of that program will occur next year. Additionally, at the secondary levels, we had a, a large focus on biology and also on literature and on algebra. But almost every unit of study was touched at the secondary level because teachers were working very closely as part of the one-to-one, with new devices and students being, being able to create things now that they were originally unable to create. So they were all going through their units of study and making revisions based upon those ideas. We also spent some time this year developing an online curriculum resource center. So gone are the years where we would pass out binders of all those curriculum resources teachers would need. That all exists online now because, as you know, standards are updated so quickly that by the time it would be printed, it would be outdated. So now, we keep all of that online, and teachers are able to access that on a day-to-day Additionally, this year, we also developed a curriculum renewal process. So as you know, over the last several years, districts have been charged with putting the PA Corps into, into practice. What is that, what that has required for everybody is kind of an, an extreme and quick measure to get a lot of work done very quickly. So what we took some time to do this year is develop a process through which we're going to be very strategic about decision-makings, about how we look at and when we look at curriculum renewal. Part of that process is developing a curriculum inventory, which has been created, and that's really looking at all the materials and, or materials and resources that exist that teachers are utilizing that support the written curriculum. We utilize that information to say, well, let's get ourselves on a timeline so that we can renew these resources when and if necessary. We've had a lot of focused professional learning this year. That included a lot on grading practices. It included some on resiliency, a lot with one-to-one at the secondary level, and also a lot with writing and reading at the elementary levels. As we look at goal two, goal two is really all about instructional practices and the consistent implementation of those effective instructional practices. So we've done a number of things this year to really look at that. First, we've really looked at our data team process. So for your information, data teams meet fairly often at all levels, and there are teams of teachers coming together to talk not only about the curriculum, but also about the instructional strategies that they're utilizing. the instructional strategies that they're utilizing that are most effective to help kids learn the concepts and skills that are contained within the standards. So this year, we've visited over 150 PLCs, and that has really been ongoing conversation, which has really helped inform this week. When we have teams of teachers in for the summer for curriculum writing, we have full lists developed of tasks that need to be accomplished because teachers have been keeping a close handle on that throughout the year through our data team process. In addition, we've had grading committee, and we'll talk about that later on this evening. But that had a lot of wonderful things come out of it. One of the best things was we had some teacher leaders who stood up and stood before their peers to engage in professional learning about what are we talking about when it comes to grading here in Potts Grove. And as a result of that, we'll share with you later this evening as well the grading guidelines that have been developed. So I'll talk very briefly about the first piece. We're continually looking at our instructional coaching model, and that's really an opportunity for our teachers to engage in those instructional decision-making conversations with coaches so that they can work side by side. Michael, would you like to add on?
Yeah, well, we spent a lot of time talking about this a couple of weeks back, so I won't revisit that. But we did, except to say that we did develop the rubrics that teachers use now in their unit design revision. It's based on a model that has been, that has really gotten national attention, and I think it's really becoming part of the vocabulary. I would also add that we have, we're running two technology summer camps. One is going on this week with about 28 teachers and our coaches. And we have one that's running next week. And teachers are doing instruction in the morning. They're learning new tools, new strategies. And then in the afternoons, they're working together to review and enhance existing units of study. So that work is going on even through the summer. And we're pleased with the way that that has been adopted through our secondary faculty.
So where are we going moving into next year? Looking forward in both goals number one and goals number two. And I'll highlight just a few of these for you as we don't have time to talk about each and every one of them. As you know, program implementation and standards alignment continues to be one of our largest goals, to make sure that students are receiving the access to materials and resources for the concepts and skills that they need to learn based upon the standards. So that continues to stay at our forefront in terms of the attention that we're providing to that. We're also looking at writing across the curriculum. If I'm a content area teacher in science, for example, or I'm teaching math at the elementary level, we are all, in fact, teachers of reading and writing. So this is really going to be an effort to really look at what does writing look like and really what does reading look like in all those areas? Because as you know, we don't face any of those pieces isolated in our life or in real life. So it'll be an effort for students to see how connected reading and writing is to everything that we do in the real world. As you know, grading will have a continued impact upon what we're working on next year that will require continued focus, continued expectation development, as well as ongoing professional learning. And we will continue to focus on data teaming, so I talked a bit about that process. We'll continue to work with teams next year as they establish SMART goals and really focus in on the data that they're provided with student data and make decisions about that. And finally, we're moving forward with curriculum renewal. Some of that work is occurring this week, as I said, where teams are looking specifically at their curriculum. They're making decisions and talking about what is it that students really need to learn? And they're talking, right now, they're creating learning targets and essential questions, which will really become documents that we can share with parents and the community that show exactly by trimester and/or by marking period what students will be learning during that period of time.
Okay, so we recently talked to you about goal three, and that's looking at how we can provide supports for our at-risk students, both academically and socially, emotionally. So when we look at some of the things we started this year, we just recently presented about the multiple-tiered support system that we're working on. And also, we've talked about how we're rebooting some of the school-wide positive behavioral supports as part of that system. We're continuing to look at some of these other pieces. And this is the model in which we're looking at for those school-wide positive behavioral supports and also the multiple-tiered supports. Some of the highlights this year have been working, then, that multiple-tiered support system, rebooting the school-wide positive behavioral supports, implementing the grant that we've had from the foundation in terms of resiliency and emotional wellness of our students and staff, and also hiring the BCBA, which has really been working with a lot of our students who have had the highest needs in the district. Some of the other things is that in the short six months I've been here, I've been trying to spend time getting to know the different departments and the processes and the procedures, past practice, so that we know what sorts of things are strengths and needs of the different programs. And Mrs. Piscito and I are looking forward to the summer to kind of look at some of those ways that we can build upon that and hit the ground running for next year as well. So looking forward, you know, I think one of the things is we would still see the same types of goals into next year, but going deeper and more in-depth in terms of what we're doing with the school-wide positive behavioral supports. We want to build those next tier-two and tier-three systems to really help the more at-risk students. We also want to make sure that we, you know, kind of have a process for those multiple-tiered support systems so that we have some consistency throughout the district. And we'll continue to work on some of the efforts in the gifted program with the audit that's been done now that we have a complement of teachers, you know, with Mrs. Armstrong retiring and stuff, and also look at the social, emotional needs of our students. So that's where we're looking as we go ahead.
Okay, goal four is really about school climate and communication, both internal and external. These are some of the things that we accomplished this year. We implemented our new calling broadcast system, School Messenger. I think it was a rough winter weather-wise, but at least in terms of communication, it was much, much better. And my stress level at 4:30, quarter to 5:00, was much lower because this system worked. We also implemented something called TagPoles, which is sort of an enhanced text messaging service for our youngest students in our K-2. So some teachers did pilot it this year, and I think the parents have been very pleased with the very timely updates and occasional photographs of their children in class. We implemented something called Oasis. That's not spelled wrong. That's an online assessment system. And Oasis is a way in which we've implemented Act 82, which is a whole new teacher-administrator evaluation system. And all that now is done, at least for our professional staff this year, electronically. And the administration has been training, building principles. Teachers have been using it effectively, and it enhances the communication and makes sure that all the steps are followed. So that was accomplished this year. One-to-one, again, you know, I won't revisit that, but there was a lot of communication that went on around that, new web portal, and of course, the parent meetings. And something else that we've done this year was really a continuation of something we started last school year. We are working with our administrative assistants, providing a vehicle and opportunity for the administrative assistants to communicate needs and concerns to us, and also to work on the development of certain customer service and soft skills. So we had actually a follow-up session this year. We had an initial session last year. We'll continue that work. We're also looking at ways in which we can build systems for administrative assistants to communicate better, more effectively, more proactively with supervisors and vice-versa so that we can be a very, very user-friendly organization for parents who visit our offices. So that's some of the work we've done this year. And there are some other things that have gone on. And I can't speak to it in any detail, but I know the principals certainly can, and Mr. Voorhees, the family ELA in math nights, the elementary parent FAQs. I don't know if any principals or anybody wants to speak to any of these. We are working in building that model for key communicators. We've held some community connection events over the course of the evening, or of course of the school year in the evening, and of course, the parent meetings for the one-to-one dial program. We've conducted surveys of our students, our staff, again, all related to the dial program. We addressed that a couple of weeks ago. Looking forward, we want to be really creative in bringing parents on board with some of the academic instructional initiatives. So we're looking for creative ways to do that, to empower parents at home. You know, parents call us, ask questions about managing their students' access time with the device. There are good practices, best practices out there. We want to share that. So we want to create those opportunities next year. And we think we have some creative ways to do that, to get them when they're here for other things as well. So they don't have to come out an extra night. Also, we know we're in a competitive environment. We know there are a lot of good things that go on in Potts Grove School District. We have to do a better job at marketing those positives to our community. So we're going to work very hard on developing a strategy for getting information out to the community, to realtors, to pre-K programs, to build on the things that we do well here in Potts Grove and to improve the public perception of Potts Grove School District. So those are some of the things that we'll be doing next year around the communication goal four.
Thank you, Michael. Moving into goal six, we were charged with developing a more transparent and detailed budget process for this school year. This is something you're more familiar with probably than a lot of the other things since we're dealing with the budget here at the board level. What we've done is we developed a new comprehensive budget document, which you all have in your possession. We also developed a document for the internal use in preparing the budget. And that was new this year, more detailed, a lot more explanations and instructions. We held meetings with all the budget managers this year and justification meetings prior to their budgets being incorporated in our preliminary budget. And we also created a multi-year budget for board review. On a communication level, we had numerous opportunities to communicate with the board through news and notes, monthly board updates, weekly board updates, et cetera. With the community, we had numerous opportunities as well through the Achiever, through School Messenger, BLAST. And probably the most exciting component that we did this year was holding a key communicators' budget summit. And I think we're probably going to try and roll that out to a larger audience next year because we think it was received very well. Not only in that meeting did we review the status of the district budget, but we also played a game where we made the participants, board members, let's say, and gave them some scenarios so that they could see how difficult some of the decisions are that everybody will have to make as part of getting to the end line on this budget. We also provided additional training to all the budget managers on developing and monitoring their budget. We met with each of them, and we're providing a monthly budget status report to each budget manager so that they can more easily review the status of the budget. Looking forward, we're going to continue to try to enhance the clarity of the comprehensive budget document that we prepared this year. And we're going to look at another model that's out there called the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation. The GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. And they have a program that you can enter into where you submit your budget at the end of the budget cycle, and they grade it, and you can receive a distinguished budget award. It's a comprehensive document. The ones I've seen have been in excess of 350 pages, a lot of detail. It's really not something that will probably be used during the budget process, but it's more of a communication tool to the community as a whole after the budget is adopted. We're going to continue to refine the district's multi-year budget for discussion purposes and provide additional training for our administrative staff in monitoring their budgets. And that brings us to Jeff from goal seven.
Goal seven, high school renovation project. Wanted to bring out efficiency and effectiveness in managing the construction process and fiscal impact of Potts Grove High School renovation projects and ensure positive outcome for our students and limited impact on our community. Construction oversight, excuse me. One or more administrators have attended each of the biweekly job conferences with the construction manager and contractors. And that's almost what you see from Jim Hanna on his presentation tonight, is how we meet on a biweekly basis to make sure that we are meeting our goal. Biweekly design team meeting is held with district leadership. That's with the different directors and the superintendent to bring everyone up to speed on the different things that progress has been made. Project updates have been presented to the board. We do that on a regular basis as well. The construction budget was developed. Change order proposals in excess established. The thresholds have been presented to the board. Change order proposal below established. The thresholds have been communicated as well. And periodically, information has been provided to the board reflecting the percentage of completion, just as we did tonight and throughout our biweekly meetings. When necessary, we provide that information to the board. Our updates. The building principal, sorry, incorporates a project update weekly communication staff. The superintendent routinely incorporates project status information. When disruptions have occurred, communication to the high school family occurs throughout the school message service system. As Jim Hanna explained, we had the one incident with the no-smell tar that caused a problem for us. Looking forward, the high school renovation project is crucial and important, but just as well for the everyday service of the operation of the facilities department. So these are new goals that will be established throughout the year, starting in September. Establishing and implementing effective systems and standards to monitor efficiencies of services provided to buildings and grounds. The developing will occur in addition to onboard monitoring of the construction project. Developing clean standards and tasks. So each school will have a standard and task that are assigned for custodian services there. We'll do monthly evaluations. I personally will do that and develop a report card system that the superintendent will get a copy, the principals will get a copy too. It's just to start a dialogue of where our staff is at with the area of custodian services. Developing standardized preventive maintenance program. So that was a reflection for the maintenance division of facility services. To, once one year of preventive maintenance has occurred, we can develop a baseline. And then from that baseline, data will come from there to show how we should be performing on a regular basis of completing work orders, and we'll continue to expand on that on the following year. Developing standards for agronomy and grounds program. Laying out a schedule in advance so we can get the most efficiency performance out of our grounds maintenance instead of being reactive. Instead of being reactive, all three of these initiatives really put us in a proactive state. And as I stated, for us to get the most efficiencies out of the staff there. And it'll provide data for us to look back from year to year to see where we can improve or if we have met our maximum expectation of excellence.
Any questions from the board?
Just me?
You can go first.
I'd rather not. First, a suggestion. I had questions occur to me as you were going through each goal. And by the time I got to Goal Seven, half of them are out of my head, which may help us with time efficiency. But I think just for future reference, when we're presenting so much information, it might be helpful to break in between the goals. So, you know, it's too late now, but curriculum was where I had the majority of my questions. And maybe Goal One and Goal Three sort of intersect. But one question that I've had continually is specific to reading and what we're doing to help our economically disadvantaged students specifically that might be different from what we're doing for the rest of the student population. Or are we not doing anything different for them other than when they're identified as at-risk learners in, from a special education perspective?
I think you said two things. You said economically disadvantaged and special ed. They're not always the same.
Agree. What I talked about was the intersection there in that case.
Okay. Dan Oken explain.
I'm aware of the difference.
So as we talk about students who are economically disadvantaged, as you know, Title One plays into this concept. So each year, the state and federal government provide money to school districts based upon students who, based upon free and reduced numbers. So those monies are given to us based upon economically disadvantaged. However, the students in which need those supports are not always the same students because what you're looking for is students who are not meeting certain proficiency levels as established within our criteria. If a student meets one of those criteria or we're finding that the student does in fact need support, there are multiple things that happen. So first of all, within our Title One reading program, that's additional reading time that the student is receiving in addition to what they're receiving in the classroom. Okay? So you've heard Dr. Roberts and myself talk about Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. So all students are receiving what they need to receive at each grade level in terms of reading instruction, writing instruction, mathematics instruction. However, for those students who might be receiving Title One services, they're really receiving a Tier Two intervention. So that means in addition again to their regular education, or not regular education, but the core instruction that they're receiving, thank you, Shelley, they are also receiving an additional intervention. That's, they're utilizing a particular intervention, a particular program with some of our most expert folks. So that means those students are often meeting with the reading specialist because that person can provide the most expertise to that child in performing at higher levels. Those students are continually assessed so that when a student, again, through established criteria, if a student needs to exit the program because they're making gains, they are exited. And throughout the year, those additional services are provided. In the case of special education, I don't know if you have a specific question there, but Dr. Roberts would be able to answer that.
I don't think so. Those interventions that you're talking about, how do they, is the focus on reading skills like fluency and phonics? Is it on comprehension slash vocabulary or all of the above?
It could include all of the above. But what we spend a lot of time doing is making sure that the intervention that's provided to the student is directed at the child's particular needs. So if a child really needs instruction on phonics, we're not going to focus on comprehension because how in the world is a child going to comprehend if in fact he or she cannot yet decode words? So we do have interventions in place that are kind of approved and we go to them, so to speak. But it could be in all of those areas. It could be in one particular piece of those areas. But we do try to base it based upon what the student does in fact need.
I had a question about, tonight we have on our agenda textbooks.
Yes.
And one of the things that we went to one-to-one was the opportunity maybe not to have to purchase textbooks. So I guess my question would be, when do those opportunities present themselves? And is there a software that comes with these textbook purchases that can be integrated into the one-to-one program?
Excellent question. The answer is yes, sometimes, and no, as you might imagine. So let me explain this for you a little bit. We do have a number of courses, as you know, you approved five new courses to be in place at the high school next year. Only two of those courses for next year required new textbooks because the other three, for purposes that I'll describe in a bit, do not require those textbooks. So what happens on a day-to-day basis when we're making decisions about if and when resources are needed? What happens is teams of teachers, the teachers who are going to be involved in teaching these courses and writing the curriculum and looking at the standards, are looking exactly at how are they going to put expectations into place for students? What they do at that point is begin writing out units of study, their curriculum, and then and only then do they start looking at resources. Because we are not run by textbooks. We are rather run by standards. Our curriculum dictates how we utilize the material to put into place. And it's important to understand that we have programs and resources that support our curriculum, but our curriculum is where we start really with the standards. So after teams of teachers in collaboration with myself and some other folks, we make decisions about if, in fact, resources are needed. And if they are needed, we have a conversation of could they be online resources or do they need to be physical copy? From there, the decision always gets a little muddied, as you might imagine. And that's because not all publishers provide an online version of whatever it is that they have in place. Okay? Some and most actually publishers will provide it in a bundle. So they'll provide a physical text as well as some online subscriptions, which is the case of the calculus textbook that you have on your board report this evening. So we do go through that process and we look very carefully at which resources we need to support the curriculum. We determine if we can utilize online or physical or if the publisher offers one or the other. Again, in most instances, because it's a moneymaker for publishers, is they bundle these together and you purchase them kind of as a package.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Follow-up on that. So there is no option, especially for the AP classes, that were asked to purchase textbooks to do an online alternative to textbooks? Is that a true statement?
For the one, for the particular psychology course that we're looking at for the AP Psych as well as the AP Computer Science A, the AP Computer Science A has a text, but it also has other materials that go along with it, including software. And I know Michael can talk more eloquently about that. So it does include some of those online components. The, almost all AP courses do require a physical text, just in terms of how AP or the college board lays that information out.
That's what I was getting to. I know that, you know, as you said, they bundle in the online resources as an add-in. But what you're saying is it really isn't possible, at least at this time, for us to forego the hard copy textbooks for some other electronic media, at least as it relates to the AP courses.
For these particular courses we're talking about tonight, yes, that's a true statement.
Okay. And I just wanted to also say, and I may be jumping the gun a little bit, that I did a little research on the pricing that we're paying for these books and we really can't get them any cheaper anywhere. I really looked into it. And you can find onesie-twosies of them at cut-rate prices, but they only will sell you one or two. And the amount of effort it would take to gather up enough of those resources to buy them at a cheaper price just really wouldn't be warranted.
I appreciate that point. We do in fact look to make sure if we can look at other places. You often find that the onesie-twosie kinds of deals, often you don't know the condition that they're in. And often, there are several different editions of that particular text.
Just two other comments. You got a question?
Well, I just want to say, I've never seen a presentation like this. And I just have to tell you, this was great to see each administrator do your own department. And I was just really excited. Congratulations, everybody. This is a great team we have here at Potts Grove.
Just one thing that Dave had brought up about the budget process. I wanted to thank you all for making the budget a lot simpler than it has been in the past this year. You might not see that from the audience as much, but from the process before, it was a lot more open, which there's still room for improvement, but has been a lot better. And also, last thing was, we had received an audit from the interim facilities.
Director.
Directed before Mr. Caldwell had came. And just at a later time, if we could just have an update of what you took on as part of their report, what we're taking and what we're not taking, or where we can see where our improvement would be.
Well, to piggyback off of that note, Mr. Caldwell is using some of the recommendations that were presented in that report. And tonight, we just did a snippet of what we want to concentrate on so that we could garner your approval to move forward the focus areas. But each department flushes out a very comprehensive department innovation plan to show what they are going to do moving forward. So that will be, you'll see that detail in those plans. And obviously, we finish those plans in the fall. And once they're approved, then we post them on the website. So what we're looking for is your approval to move forward with the identified strategies and actions that we presented. And then we'll work toward detailing that out over the summer. And then our principals subsequently will develop their school improvement plans that mirror the district's goals and objectives.
I think that was a motion that she made in disguise. So I recommend, or I motion that we approve the continuous improvement plan as presented. That is an agenda item, isn't it?
Well, I didn't put it on, I wasn't sure.
Okay. Since it's not only agenda, we're going to open up for public comment about any of the information that was just presented, but specifically just to this information for right now. For the motion. None? All right. Have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions or comments on the board?
So I just quick, we had progress towards and then recommendations forward. Was that just mutual, or blocked?
No. Well, the, I'm sorry. The orange, the one that's in orange is the final progress update. And we spoke about each thing. And then the light blue is a draft, which is what I was asking you to give us the blessing to move forward with, on how we will then take what we've done and move it forward for next year. And then if we can get that approved, then our principals and our department chairs will flesh out their specific action steps and timelines and, over the summer, we start working on that.
Right. So what I was asking was, is there a second presentation on?
No. We put that right in there.
That's what I thought. Okay.
The only thing that I continue to dislike about this format is while the evidence and measures are specific things, there's never or often no supporting data to go along with the evidence that's presented. An example is we piloted Lucy Cawkins' writing this year, and now we're going to roll it out across the board. But what impact did it have in terms of improvement in the piloted areas? I don't see anything. And I never see anything like that.
Some of that data is what's seen at the school improvement plan level. So the principals come in and meet on a cyclical cycle, which is really Goal Five in here. We didn't present about it this evening, but we have that in place. And they present data specific to their buildings with regard to the initiatives. Something like the Lucy Cawkins initiative, you're not necessarily going to see achievement data spurring from that because it's just something that we just started. We only did one unit of study on that particular thing. But other things like our benchmark goals and we use our Ames Web data, we use our F and P data, those types of pieces of data will come to the table through the building principal at those cyclical cycles.
I'm doubting that you folks are examining the data. It's just that we don't ever see the results of that. And now we're asked to approve something just that doesn't have any supporting information. So for me, it's very hard to know whether I should approve this or not, to be perfectly blunt.
Do you'd like another meeting where we bring each building principal forward? When we go over the data, it's just going to take a lot of time. So we have to dedicate that time to that process. Or you could trust the central office administration to do those cycles, which is what we've been doing for, to monitor our progress moving forward and then make the recommendations to the board.
I think at times, we have to trust our superintendent and our administrators. If this is what they say, I don't feel I need to know every little detail, but I do entrust in you in making the recommendation.
Any other comments or questions? This is not talking about grading scale. This is just what was in the, okay, okay. I have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
While we were speaking about our goals, we had a young lady come in that I wanted to make sure we honored this evening, and that's Ms. Chloe Claus. And if Chloe will come forward, on behalf of the School Board of Directors and Administration, I'd like to thank you for your year of service to the school district as our very first student board representative. And while serving on the board, you brought forward concerns and ideas. And we can't thank you enough for your perspective and what you've brought to us and to the table. To tell you a little bit about Chloe, for those of you who don't know Chloe as well, Chloe played tennis for four years and I saw her receive an award just this spring from her coach. She's also a member of Spark the Wave and participated in a variety of community service events, including the Aberitum in Upper Potts Grove. And this summer, Chloe is going to be busy doing an internship with the Sierra Club, which is a national environmental organization, working at the All House Aberitum, running a camp for children and helping out with different community days, and writing articles and doing research for the Santa Toga Post. Wow! And in the fall, she'll be attending Swarthmore College, majoring in anthropology. And thank you, Chloe, for your contributions this year, and we wish you the best of luck in years to come.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, congratulations.
Yes. Good luck, Chloe. Hope that can visit us.
I will.
Okay. Well, we're going to move on to grading practices recommendations. And just as a reminder, you received the grading practices recommendations in a pretty comprehensive report. And Mr. Voorhees is going to very briefly review for you those grading guidelines and talk to you about our recommendation for the implementation of those guidelines. And we also have a special guest this evening, which is Ms. Jill Bosler, who is one of our high school guidance counselors, is going to offer some perspective on this as well. So welcome.
Good evening, once again. So I'm here to talk about grading guidelines and our grading practices. As Ms. Fiola did mention, you have a pretty comprehensive report of some of the things that we're recommending to move forward. So what I plan to do is not go through that report point by point, but what I'd much rather do is provide you kind of with a large picture of what has occurred over the time and why we are recommending what we are recommending and how people have been involved in that process. So as you are well aware, we had grading practices existing in our comprehensive plan. The board kind of prompted us to look at that a bit faster, so we did. And really, our goal was to prepare for conversion to a 10-point scale in the fall of 2015. Why we were doing that, we were really looking to provide some more or enhance the consistency and make sure that we have some district-wide processes in place supporting grading. So what is the purpose of our work? I'll just highlight a few of these. Again, while we were moving to the 10-point scale, we really wanted to do this in a meaningful way. So we wanted to do that in the context of what grading practices do we believe in to make sure that we're providing students with feedback they need in order to develop as productive citizens. So what we were looking at is providing appropriate, timely, and specific feedback to students. make sure that we're providing students with feedback they need in order to develop as productive citizens. So what we were looking at is providing appropriate, timely, and specific feedback to students. And grading, providing a grade to a student is one way in which we provide that feedback to students. In addition, we're establishing expectations at the teacher level, so that teachers are fully aware of what it looks like at a classroom level for students to be working upon. So as you know, we had a grading committee that's been in place. This involved K through five teachers and principals, and involved also six through 12 teachers and principals, guidance counselors, as well as district office administration. And this is, I do want to pause, because this was a team of about 25 or 30 people who spent an enormous amount of time independently, together with us as a group. And while I don't have time to mention them by name, they all put far above and beyond the time that they really have allotted within their day, to spend time with us and really talk about what each of these grading practices means here in Pottsgrove. So I thank the committee for that. On the left-hand side, you see some of the times that we had for not only committee meetings, but also the ongoing professional learning. And this is just some of it that is identified. And as I said before, one of the best parts of this was, we had teachers who stood up, who were involved on this committee, who became teacher leaders, and provided professional learning to their colleagues in talking about grading practices. So this is an important slide. What we did as a group is we looked at the research. And to do that, we looked at multiple authors, we looked at multiple researchers, because we wanted to get a wide approach to what are all the different ways in which we can handle this. So we did that, and we engaged in a lot of conversation. And we engaged in that conversation because we have to identify where we currently are and where we dream to be in terms of providing students with timely and specific feedback. So what we focused on very quickly were four grading practices, and I'll share those in just a moment. And each one of those grading practices provides us with multiple guidelines. And they really became the foundation for our work moving forward. So when we were making decisions about anything we did, we looked back to these four grading practices. What we realized very quickly on the practice side is, this is incredibly complex. And since all of us have been, have had some education in our lives, we've been involved in a K-12 experience, or in an undergrad experience, or on a master's level, we've all had some sort of experience with schooling. And as a result, there's all sorts of many opinions about grading. So our job was to look at the research, again, determine where Pottsgrove currently is, and talk about where we need to get to, or where we'd like to get to. To do that, we realized we'd need sustained professional learning. We had much of that this year. That will continue into the future, because these are ongoing conversations. We needed to develop expectations, so that everybody's clear about what these practices mean. And finally, we had to target some timelines. And those timelines look different based upon each of those guidelines, because we're at different points with relative guidelines. So these four research-based guiding practices or grading practices, we looked at. So they include, only include scores that relate to the achievement of standards, use a variety of assessment methods to collect high-quality, organized evidence of achievement, use appropriate grade calculation, and use grading and assessment procedures that support learning. Beneath there, in your report, you also see there's several guidelines. And it's important to note here that there is going to be, there may be discrepancy between best practice and what we're ready to do next year. Because again, it's incredibly complex to move a system with all the required professional learning, as well as the expectation, while honoring where we currently are. So as we looked at this, we utilized those grading practices, and we became rooted in those grading practices, because they were research-based. Again, we recognize our current versus our desired efforts, where we hope to get to. We developed some strategic guidelines. From there, we could make some recommendations about how we move forward. We developed teacher expectations. And we did that because teachers were engaged with us through professional learning on April 1st. Part of that process was going through each of these practices. They almost went through guideline by guideline and said, yes, we are currently doing this. Yes, this is currently in place. Or no, we're not currently doing this. This is a stretch. That would be something we'd need some continued conversation or continued professional learning about. And from there, we developed an implementation plan about what we can recommend, what we believe to be the best recommendation. So I'll share, the implementation plan, what we looked at was a number of things. Number one, there's a number of districts around us, and really across the nation, that have gone through a transition similar to the one that we're looking at. And what we found was, from other districts, as well as a programmer who has worked with those districts, is that in almost every case, and I think in every case, they looked at phasing this in over time, rather than applying it and going back in terms of what that looks like. So here, you can see what we're recommending in terms of how that will be phased in over time, and I'm certain there will be questions about this. I also want to talk about, because when we put this into place, a couple of things need to occur. Number one, we have an academic profile. I believe you have a copy of that, or have been provided with a copy of that. Thank you, Ms. Fiola. So our academic profile really describes for colleges exactly what our academic program looks like. So it provides all sorts of information that colleges know, so that they're aware of what this would look like. Given this change that we're looking at, also denoted on there will be a very clear, highlighted place where we would say we've moved to a 10-point scale in whatever time period. Right? In addition, that would also occur on a student's transcript. So it's occurring in two places, so that it becomes very apparent that we moved from a seven-point scale to a 10-point scale in the fall of 2015. To talk about the academic profile, I'm going to have Bellie Jill Bosler, as she's been a guidance counselor for 20 years and can talk with expertise about this situation.
Thank you. I'm going to just review my notes as I go along, so I don't miss anything. First of all, I'd like to say that thank you for having me here. And the gentleman who talked about the renovations, I want to say that I had to sell my convertible Mustang a couple of years ago, because my daughter drove, started to drive. I'm in favor of a convertible guidance office at this point. So if we can make a motion on that later, I'm fine with that. So one of the things that we started to do a few years ago that was extremely important was take a look at our profile. And luckily, Shelley and Bill, and Bill allowed us to kind of take this and run with it in terms of the guidance office. We started this process by talking with other school districts in the area, getting information about the profiles that they have, that they provide to their many publics. We interviewed colleges in the area. We talked with recruiters, technical schools, trade schools. So some of the things in the research that we did to basically put together a better profile that's going to emphasize our strengths and truly tell our publics what we do. That's what we tried to do in the last few years. So our profile currently is slightly different from the one that we've had just three years ago. Three years ago, we had a very basic profile. So we've done a lot of work in the last two or three years to improve our profile. One of the things that colleges, and the technical schools, and the recruiters are looking for in our profile is information specifically about our school. And that will involve, if you look at the first area, it's going to involve three things. Talking about our community, understanding our demographics, that's number one. Number two, academics, looking at our grade scale, our weight, how we weight courses, and also what our offerings are. So in other words, our profile is a profile of our school. Secondly, what's most important is the transcript. In terms of the transcript, that's identifying specifically the individual student, and helping people understand what they've done in the last four years of Pottsgrove High School. Two things that are important there are, number one is rigor. So they're asking, did the student take advantage of all the opportunities that Pottsgrove has? That's number one. And then the second thing is obviously performance, how they did in those classes. So grades, GPA, class rank, SAT scores, ACT scores, things like that. That's provided on the transcript. And of course, on the transcript, as Dan said, was, we also provide the grading scale there as well. The third, and probably one of the things that you're not going to see on paper, is how we are perceived by these colleges, these recruiters, these technical schools, in terms of transparency. That's one of the most important things that we have to keep in mind as we talk about grading practices. We need to continue to be transparent. When we polled multiple colleges over the last few years, that was one of the most important things. And as we think about changing our grading scale, what they ask of us, so that they can continue to understand, in Temple's words, is that we are transparent, that they can still look at us and understand that we're, if we're changing our grading scale, we're changing it because it's the right thing to do. It better describes what we're doing here in the school, and it helps them define what our students are accomplishing. So those three areas, our profile, the transcript, and our transparency, are the most important things as we go to and consider changes in our grading scale. Is that, okay? All right. Thank you.
So just as some additional next steps that we'd be recommending, we've been looking at ongoing professional learning, because as you noted within your report, we have some things that we have on the docket to complete next year. Some things, as we continue to move forward, are things that we would be accomplishing in the 2016, 17 year. So this will require ongoing sustained professional learning for staff, so that we can make sure that there are consistent practices in place. We'll also be looking at the development of future guidelines. So you see two things. Right now, in your report, you have highlighted guidelines that we're looking at for next year. Some that are not highlighted are those things that are occurring at a later time. Those are not fully developed yet, because we're going to begin focusing on the ones that we're looking at for next year, knowing that we need to do those guidelines for the other years. We're also looking at the implementation of teacher expectations. So we have those listed out, and we'd be working to put those into place for next year. And then finally, really looking at our revisions to our elementary report card as we move forward in this process. And in fact, again, as I talked about, curriculum writers working this week, they were really beginning some of the stages and steps of that work as of, early as of yesterday.
I'm sure the board has questions, so we'll ask questions.
Okay.
We'll mix it up.
Please, thank you.
All right. Rick doesn't want to be leadoff tonight, okay? One of the things that I looked at here was, when it says, "Apply other consequences for academic dishonesty other than reduced grades or scores," could you describe, like, what do you, so are we saying we're not going to reduce a grade or a score? Or are we saying that, you know, there will be a different consequence other than, you know, these things? Would that have to be spelled out in a policy, or?
So one of the things, and this, by the way, this particular topic generated a lot of conversation among the team, among the committee. Specifically, what we looked at is, what we want to make sure is the grade that we're providing to students is a true indicator of that student's achievement. Okay? So as soon as we start putting other things into that grade, what happens? The grade becomes distorted. So for example, I provide extra credit. That's going to distort the grade. It's not a true indicator of student achievement. I take off points because an assignment's late. That distorts the grade, because it's not a true indicator of student achievement. So as we look at something as applying other consequences, and we've had conversations, and I know Dr. Ramage and Dr. Ziegler have been involved in these conversations with me, we've talked about, what is it, really, our end hope is that students must complete the work in some way, shape, or form, and that we're getting that information. So what does that look like? It could be occurring during pride period, it could occur during grade, or period nine, excuse me, at the middle school level. There are also some expectations developed for teachers, kind of delineating a process that they should go through in order to make sure that there's not something else going on in the student's life. Our end goal is to make sure that the end, that final grade is something that's really providing information about the student's achievement. So some of those things really will need to be listed out and further developed in terms of how we do that, but it is a recommendation.
Okay. So where are those lines?
There were really three areas of questions slash concern I have about this as presented. And that speaks to one of them, which is, you know, when I'm looking at it, I've looked at it several times. In grading practice three, we have eliminate zeros in grade determination when evidence is missing as punishment. Use alternatives such as reassessing to determine real achievement, or use eye for incomplete or insufficient evidence. And that's slated for next year, not, or the year after next, 2016, 17. Of all the grading practices that come out of standards-based grading, this is the one that I actually feel the most strongly about. I think that, for the reasons that you articulated, and for others, if the goal is student learning, then the best way to achieve student learning is to ensure that the work gets done, and to make it extremely difficult for students to get zeros. I don't know if I want to say impossible, but extremely difficult. And I can think of multiple examples in my own middle schoolers' work over the past couple of years, where it was different from that. You know, he met, he didn't meet a deadline, and he got the lowest possible score, which in the middle school isn't a zero, but it was still the lowest possible score. And I felt like, like it was counterproductive to his learning, because he just didn't do it. Why should he? He got the low grade. There was, there was no incentive for him to go beyond. And extending it out to the larger population of students, I think that the consequences of that can be dramatic. So I'm right there. So question one is, why is it that we can't do this next year, instead of in two years?
So as I said, there are particular places in the document that you're looking at that generate a lot of conversation among teachers. One of them, Mr. Valentine, you identified. The other one, Mr. Rubenowitz, you identified. So applying consequences other than a lower or a reduced grade was one of them that they talked a lot about. It generated a lot of conversation. By the way, that conversation wasn't always positive in nature, as you might imagine. The other was providing, not providing a zero for a misassignment, or whatever the case may be. The reason for that is, again, we've all been through an educational system, and like it or not, we as educators have had a long practice of doing certain things. So this requires a lot of time and professional learning to move a system, to really begin having conversations about what does that look like. So I fully understand, and you heard me say, that we want all grades to reflect student achievement, but at the same time, we have to honor where the system currently is and identify the ways in which we get to that into the future.
And similarly, with low test scores. A typical standards-based grading implementation allows students to essentially retest to demonstrate learning. Or often, I've seen that as a common practice. A student gets a 30 on a test. It's below whatever the threshold is. The goal is for them to learn the material. They can't really move on in some cases unless they learn the material, or even if they can, it's a gap that comes back to haunt them, because they haven't learned the material. So is that here somewhere?
That one also generated a lot of conversation. So the requirement there is really, we not look at it as retesting necessarily, but we look at it, as you said, as opportunities for students to demonstrate evidence of their understanding of new concepts or skills. So what does that look like in an actual classroom? It means I could test, let's say, day 10 of school, I'm providing a quick assessment for my students, and I'm getting feedback about where they currently are. I might test that same skill. I don't want to say retest, but I might look at that same skill or that same concept again on day 15 and day 20, and I'm looking at how the student progresses through that. So instead of looking at it through a retest lens, although you're right, that certainly talked about in a standards-aligned system, it's really multiple opportunities for the student to show what he or she has learned in terms of those concepts and skills.
Okay. I'm not sure I buy that, but, because teachers have to move on, and especially with some of the more rigorous curriculum that they're going through. And I wonder if we might not end up with, with standards that aren't learned by students in some cases, without ensuring that they learn the material. I mean, also, it sounds like, to me, like the curriculum would be much more difficult. They have to keep circling back with, as they're moving forward with instruction. So it feels pretty unwieldy to me as a way to achieve a goal, the goal, which is student learning. Right? You don't need to comment, because I'm editorializing anyway. I have more questions, though, about this. Last one related to this subject is, we're saying that we're going to have a minimum grade of 55 for a one-year period, and then reevaluate. Is that the stopgap to get us to? Is that the stopgap to get us to eliminating zeros in the following year? And do we anticipate dropping that in the future?
Well, I think it's meant to say it is exactly as it's written there. It's meant to, let's really look at this throughout the implementation or the pilot of that piece next year and then reevaluate it. What it really is, is an effort to not penalize a student for performing poorly during the first marking period, for example. Because what we certainly don't want to have happen is students give up as a result of a first marking period grade, and they're set back, which can happen if that child receives a zero for the final grade. So as a step toward getting to that, putting a student out of 55 as opposed to a zero is much, much different. The student can, in fact, make up a lot of that ground if the student had a 55. What we don't want at any point in time is for students to give up.
Okay. And back on the editorial board, that, it seems to me like these two concepts sort of are trying to balance each other out, or I don't like the idea of setting an arbitrary minimum score. What I'd rather do is ensure that students learn and ensure that students complete their work. So I guess if we can't do the first or the second one, then the first one will serve for a year, but I think long term, it's not the right way to go, because it rewards for performance. At the same time, as it might prevent a student from sort of falling off a grade cliff that they can't recover from, I think the better option is to just make it so they have to get their work done. And so that's point one. Now, the two issues that really bothered me about this, one maybe doesn't bother me quite as much after doing my own research, and that was the retroactivity or not aspect of converting to a 10-point scale. Specifically, the recommendation from the administration, and everybody who's ever done it has never gone back and reconverted grades. But we had some feedback from certain community members, including one future board member about that, who felt very strongly that if we don't go retroactive with this conversion, that we might be compromising our students' ability to gain access to scholarships specifically. And an example used in a letter that was sent to us was Temple University. And as everybody on the board knows, I have contacted Temple, who got me to the director of admissions, and I had some dialogue with the director of admissions at Temple University on this subject. And I tried to frame the question so specifically that it was almost a yes or no answer, which is, if we don't convert our, well, just for the public, Temple has thresholds of scholarship. If your grade point average is 3.8 or above, then you get $4,000. And if it's 3.6 or above, you get, I'm making it up now, because I don't remember, $3,000. There are other criteria, but the GPA is, if you don't make it, then you're not eligible for that level of scholarship. And one, you know, it's presidential scholarship, et cetera. It's on their webpage. Anybody can look it up. So what I wanted to know is if we didn't convert the previous grades for, say, our high school juniors and seniors, would we be affecting their ability to gain the highest level of scholarship? Because let's not forget that a, in our new system, a 92 is an A-, in our old one, it was a B. And so if we did retroactively convert, people's GPAs would be raised compared with how they will ultimately be if we don't. So I spoke with this woman via email, and I plan to share the email exchange with everybody, but frankly, her answers were vague, and I kept asking and re-asking the questions, because I couldn't get a simple, an answer to the simple question, which is, if we don't convert, will our students not be, will our students be ineligible for the higher levels of scholarship? And ultimately, she said that as long as it's provided in the profile, she feels like she could, that they'll make adjustments. But my specific questions never got answered, and I followed up with her today and found out that she had a conversation with Dr. Shirk today. So I was interested to know what the, what the results of your conversation with her was, because sometimes email doesn't work, and speaking is better.
Been at Temple, Temple Al for over 30 years, undergrad, and then grad, and I have called on Temple University throughout my career for a lot of different types of advice, information, professional development, so forth and so on. So I've tapped the admissions offices many times as a principal in my prior job. And one of the things that I asked her about the admissions process, which I really, which I really knew, but I wanted to hear it again, was one of the things about going back and retroactively changing grades, as a building principal, you never change a teacher's grades. I could never do that. And what would happen to me was, at the end of a marking period, especially for seniors, a parent would come and say, "Look," the student would miss it by 1%. And I could only recommend to the parent and to the teachers that the teacher review the records, because once they established that 59, I could never go back and do that. I could never go back and change that student's, the teacher's record. This teacher could go back and change the record for that student. So that happened, that happened to me on several occasions, which leads me to the conversation that I had with Ms. Mondo, and that is, she said, "When we look at college transcripts for seniors, we don't even look at the senior year. We look at the freshman, sophomore, and junior year. So for you as a, that Pots Grove change will not affect any of your seniors, because we don't receive those transcripts until the end of junior or beginning of July. What we look for specifically is the weighted courses. Is there a weighted GPA? And we really look at rigor, and we look at fluff. Because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to compromise our organization. So we really, we heavily weigh the rigor versus rough. I specifically did ask her, "Will this scale have an impact on scholarship dollars?" And she told me, "No, it will not." Okay? And she really stressed transparency. I know, Jill, you stressed it, stressed transparency on the profile. Who we say we are, that's who we are. With the profile, the transcripts, and one thing we didn't mention tonight, which is big in our community, is the NCAA. We have to be transparent to the NCAA for all of our student athletes. You know, wherever they move forward on that scale, whether it's a Division I athlete or obviously a Division III athlete, that's very, very important to us. Their concern about the grade change, the first question she had for me is, "Why? Why are you doing it?" Because to me, and to our department, that, that's a red flag. It's only a red flag is, because we're going to ask the question, "Are you trying to inflate? What's your mode of operation?" And of course, I said, "No, we're not. We're trying to level the field." And I also, what we'd like to see, we'd like to see ourselves do is take the percentage scale and change that to an alpha. Take that to an alpha, and she was like, "That would be tremendous, because that would then put you on a collegiate scale." And I said, well, I even went on to say about the plus-minus scale, which is, of course, Temple is a plus-minus university, and which a lot of universities are. So that was something that she said in regards to that particular thing, that particular topic. And she said, and then Jill, and got the same information from our correspondent who works with Pots Grove, specifically Temple, is, "Your AP scores, your SAT and ACT scores, and your grades are solid. The students you send to Temple, we know the integrity of your system. So we're not going to question. If someone comes in and has quality grades, good SATs or ACTs, and has taken AP courses, we feel, we feel we have a solid candidate for our university." So I felt, you know, very positive with what she had to say. She took time. She didn't rust the conversation. She really felt that the 10-point scale overall has no effect on our students or student athletes as moving forward, and it will bring us in line with some other, other local, you know, high schools that are on a 10-point scale. And she said, "Kudos, kudos to the alpha scale, and again, just make sure you're transparent." So that's how we left the conversation, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to share that with the board tonight.
Thank you for taking the time to do that. As I said, sometimes email isn't the most efficient way to have a conversation. I was hoping to do it in email, because then it would be forwardable. So I appreciate that you did that.
May I add two things? One, this is the scholarship information that you were referring to for Temple. And the second thing is, is that it's important to know that well over 90% of the schools that we, the colleges and universities that we polled, they do not compare one school with another school. They're looking at our students in the context of our school. So there is not a comparison for admission or scholarships, looking at one school versus another.
Well, and of course, this is just one school.
Well, as I said, over 90% of the schools that we polled, and of course, there's 5,000 colleges and universities in the nation, that with the timeframe that we had in terms of trying to speed this up for these purposes, we didn't get to poll 5,000. But we certainly, you know, had a nice smattering of schools across the country, and well over 90% say, "We do not compare one school to another."
Oh, and I wasn't suggesting that we did. My only concern was whether or not we might be inadvertently affecting our students' scholarships, as was suggested by a member of the community. And I'm pleased to know that the proposed method won't adversely affect available scholarship money, which was the only thing I was, I was trying to either verify. Even though it is only one school, it was a good example, because it has these different levels of scholarship that are tied to GPA. And so I thank you, and I thank Bill for that. But that leads me to my last question, which is the alpha scale, which I assume you mean assigning a 4.33 GPA to a A+ and 4.00 to an A, 3.67 to an A-, et cetera. So that's what we mean by the alpha scale?
That's correct.
Okay. So as I expressed my concern about that, and it's interesting to me to hear that the admissions counselor likes that.
Director.
Director, yeah. Is the example where we're effectively flattening the differential between the low end of an A+ and the high end of the A+. If a student, if a student got all 97s on every class, they would have the same GPA as a student that got all 100s on all their classes. And they would effectively be ranked the same, even though one student performs appreciably better. And, you know, my first thought was, "Well, will that really happen?" But we have a lot of students who are 100 students in this school district. And so how does going to the alpha scale benefit our students specifically? That's the thing that I'm missing. I understand that it aligns with college academic methodologies. I get that, but how does it specifically benefit them?
I'll take a shot at that. I think, I go back to the foundation of our organization. That's our, that's our teachers. And one of the things that they, that they look for, appreciated, and rallied around was going to the 10-point scale and being able to establish a difference between a 90A and that 97A, because that was really the key, that key component. So that gives us the opportunity to take each, each grade level and break it into thirds, if you will. And then when you get to the, when you get to the top, I understand exactly, you know, what you're saying. Now there's three more points along the way of differentiation. And I think, I think the key is the differentiation that this scale establishes throughout, not at just the top, or not at just the bottom. And I think, and as, again, as a high school principal, I think Dr. Ziegler has seen this in the short tenure that he's been there, when you get to those top kids, it's going to come down to the thousandth placehold. It's going to come down to a possibility of two students possibly as valedictorian. And especially when you get to a bigger high school, like the colleagues that I have now at Springford has blossomed, if you will, there's more chances to have kids along that same path. So I always found that, and as a building principal, kids will separate themselves naturally through AP and through honors along the way. And in fact, and we haven't even talked about this, but a trend, a trend is to deal, is to do away with that, that class rank as far as an official number out there. It's to have, you would have a class rank, yes, but it wouldn't be on a valedictorian, salutatorian type of scale, where that would be recognized on graduation night. It would be a pool of the top students would have an opportunity to share, to share their successes. So Mr. Rubenowitz, I recognize you're 97, 98, 99, and 100, but they are the cream of the crop. And I think the teachers felt that they really wanted to reward the cream of the crop along the way, but they also wanted to give credit to the student who just made it to, you know, the B- as well, like wanted to give the credit along the way where they felt it was due. So I'll maybe defer to Daniel. I mean, I don't know if there's anything else I missed. I think that's pretty much.
I think we set it here.
Okay.
But doesn't the credit come from the number itself? I mean, so, so whether it's a 4.33, or a 98, or a 3.67 and a 92, in a way, Bill, for me, you proved my point, which is that, that there is a distinction between the student performance, and if it comes down to this infinitesimal difference, then shouldn't we let the numbers make the decision, rather than flattening the differences between the numbers? That's the part that I'm missing.
You're not missing, and it's, you're not missing it at all. You know, one of the things, and again, when you, in my experience in working with organizations and foundations, one of the things that I've found is, you're not going to get everything that you want. And when we met with our teachers, in fact, this was deja vu for me. You can ask the people I work with. I went through this at my previous school district. So this was a deja vu experience. I had the same conversations 13 miles up the road that I had, I had down here. And, you know, we had to decide as an organization, what hill we were going to die on, what we were going to live with or live without. So the Pots Grove teachers and that, and that, throughout the last six months, that was a common ground that we could, we could all live with. So that's why that recommendation got made, because it was a common ground that everybody could live with moving forward. So that's really, that's really, Rick, how it came to be.
Last question on this, isn't the programming more complicated to go with this than it would be if we just kept the same numeric system that we currently have? It's probably a Michael question, but...
I think the system that we're recommending is so pervasive out there that the code is probably, you know, mostly done and just gets, you know, and just gets customized, you know, for whatever, you know, is unique about, you know, about our, about our environment. But it's coded for all kinds of, you know, grade point scale scenarios, but what we're going to is, you know, I think it's pretty pervasive, so I don't know that it's going to pose any, any programming challenges for it.
At the end of the day, this is the only thing that's bothering me about this. If we didn't have this flattening of the differences between the scores, every other concern I've had has been addressed appropriately, but this one keeps stopping me. And that may be just me, and I have to say that you gave me new, new evidence by virtue of the reaction from the admissions counselor, excuse me, director at Temple. So...
The only thing that I can say in closing to that is that, at the end of the day, if we stay with the numeric percentage, okay, Mrs. Bossler is going to have to convert, because somebody's going to ask her to convert, and then she's going to have to convert, and she's going to have to say that that 90 is whatever it is, that the 90 equals and the 99 equals. So, you know, that, so they'll have, they'll have, they'll have to work, that they'll have to continue, continue to do that. And again, I, you know, that would be the difference. I think the collegiate, the collegial aspect for me is huge with our students today. I think that's, that's a component I would not want to overlook, so that when they get to that next level, that this is, this is not a surprise. You know, and I think, and I'm hoping too, that, that our teachers will, will do a better job with grading as well with this type of scale.
All right. Well, that was the, probably the most persuasive thing you just said. So thank you for that.
Any other questions about the grading scale?
I think we should also make one last comment, that there is some provisions in the school code that alluded to the fact that once a record is a record, it shouldn't go back and be retroactively changed. And for those reasons, we're recommending that we not go backward. we not go backward.
Daniel, are you going to talk about textbook recommendations? This poor guy.
Good evening.
You are in for a race.
I just want to say, I have no questions about textbooks.
Thank you. Just to give you, I think we already spoke a bit about this, but I did want to talk about it again. The board did approve for five new courses to occur at the high school for next year, two of which we're asking for textbook adoptions with. So that includes the AP Psychology, as well as the Advanced Placement Computer Science A. AP Psychology includes both a physical copy of a textbook, as well as workbooks for students. The AP Computer Science A includes not only a textbook, but also many materials, lab things, lab resources that go along with it as well. In addition to that, we've got calculus textbooks, which we've always had a differentiated calc course, or we've had it for many years at the high school. It's not a new course, it's not one of the ones that you just provided approval for. However, the, the texts that we had in place for that particular course are aging. So through a process during which the teachers of those courses, as well as the head of the department head, in conversation with myself, we began to look at resources per the curriculum that we needed to accomplish for students. What we're recommending is the same text that's already in place, however, it's a much updated edition of that text. Some of the texts that they're using are very, very old. So they've been in place for quite some time. Again, teams of teachers always talk about this. We go through a renewal process where we look at the standards, we look at concepts and skills that students need to know, and then we have conversations about, do we need a physical textbook, or an online resources, do we need resources at all? In fact, one of the courses that you approved in the, back in February, was a Spanish in the Workplace course. We're utilizing resources that we already have in place for that particular. So we always have these conversations and say, what do we have that we can use, or does it require some additional resources? Any questions?
The textbooks are, are displayed at a certain point, like when purchasing a textbook, don't they get put out for a certain amount of time, or, I think we did that last time.
We don't have those textbooks for display enough time to get, to get this part done. It's not a requirement.
Okay, just making sure.
I have a question. When you talked about some of the, the new textbooks not having digital options that, that go along with the one-to-one program, is that because they're not available, or is that because the curriculum we chose doesn't offer that option? And I'm just wondering if, if it's the second, where the curriculum we chose doesn't offer the digital option, and only the textbooks, do we have a directive to focus on curriculums that do have the digital option?
So let me differentiate first between curriculum and programs and resources. So curriculum is really internal, locally determined documents that define the scope and sequence of learning for students. That's something we have local control over, although those are often supported by state standards. That is our curriculum. So we have curriculum maps and documents that tell teachers, these are the skills and concepts, and they outline this in a unit planner that talks about the learning targets for, for students. Then, and only after that particular piece has been accomplished, do we then begin looking for resources and materials to support that curriculum. So, we don't choose a curriculum and/or we don't choose a program to, to, we don't choose a program first. The, the end goal is to write the curriculum, really target in on those skills and concepts that students need, and then you choose the resources that are going to help you best meet that, that particular need, as established either within the unis study or based upon student need.
Okay, so, maybe I wasn't down the right path with my wording of it, but to be specific, then we decided to offer AP Psychology. And the AP Psychology doesn't have a one-to-one option, a, a digital option. It requires a textbook because it's, it's an AP course. Is there another option, or is it because that's the textbook we chose?
So is the question, are there other programs out there that might have an online option?
Right, and do we have a directive, if there are, to, to try and shoot for that first, before we go?
There, there could be, Mr. Alexander, I'm going to say that I don't necessarily know the answer to that question, because we determined, again, a textbook that we felt best matched our particular curriculum. So I don't go out looking for other programs just because they aren't online, because as I've heard Michael say multiple times, it's not about the, the technology, it's about the learning that occurs, and that really sometimes the technology provides a vehicle for that. So again, we're looking at the curriculum, then we're looking at the materials and resources to best support that. So what I don't do is go out and look and say, here's a particular option that may exist, it's online, I'm going to go with that, because that may or may not be something that's really going to help us move forward.
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, and you're always correct if I'm wrong, but what's happening now in the textbook industry is that really what they are selling you, the bulk of the cost is the online component, that you essentially purchase, or you license, you don't even really buy it, you license it for six years, and it gets updated and so forth. And the textbooks they're, they're providing at a nominal cost. Now, I don't know whether that was a specific case with the AP. I have to believe that, you know, the AP textbooks have an online component. I'm not aware of any textbook publisher that does not have an online component anymore. But in, in many instances, you're purchasing, you're licensing the online content, and they're throwing the textbooks in for a nominal charge.
So, so the online component is for students to be able to access, to receive content and information, so?
Additional, you know, supplemental resources, and web links and so forth.
Things that they get access from their MacBook Air, or their iPad. I think that's what we wanted to hear.
I just want a question. The numbers that you have for these, each of these classes with the textbooks, does that provide the correct number, if the students need to take them home, or are they just for any class, each only?
In most cases, the teachers do allow them to take them home, and usually what we do is purchase enough for one for each student kind of a thing. But in most cases, students will take them home as well.
Hi, I follow up. Earlier, we asked if you had, if it was possible to use an online-only text for AP courses, and somebody said, oh, you have to use hard copy textbooks for AP. And then later you said, when Matt asked the question, that, that you didn't look to see if there was an online option, because you went through this process and determined what the best text was, and that wasn't offered online only. So, which is?
So we look, again, I think I answered Mr. Alexander's question. What occurs is, exactly as we said, there are online resources provided with it. I don't necessarily go out looking for all the other ones that do exist. I can tell you that because of the college board, they almost all, in fact, they do say, there is always a text, physical hard copy text that goes along with that particular course.
So then there wouldn't be an online-only version, because the college board is saying that you have to do it this way.
That's right.
And that, that was what I just wanted to reemphasize. Because otherwise, I, I would say that your process should be dual. Like, you should figure out what your best text is, but also figure out what the best online option is, and compare that, at very least. But if there is no online-only option, then you got to go with the other way.
Right.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, public comment, we have one from Mr. Brady Custer.
I would just like to thank the board for this particular type of discussion. There's people who are very for this grading scale system, as Mr. Rubenowitz mentioned with one particular community member. There's also people who are extremely against this. I feel that these types of meetings help bridge the gap to a common ground, help us find a common ground, really, work together. I feel, as a incoming, as an incoming senior, I feel that this will, this proposed change will really affect our chances of going on to succeed, and being provided opportunities for success. I feel that this evens the playing field. It's, I don't feel it's dumbing down, or making it easier. I just feel that we're looking at it as an even scale, and I'd just like to thank the board for allowing comment like this to occur.
Thank you.
Executive session, the board will hold an executive session after tonight's meeting for personnel. With that, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from five twelve, five twenty-six, and six two. Motion to second, any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Receiving of the accounts for audit.
Actually, we've got a panel, I think, just had given.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll move on to the report of superintendent.
Moving on to personnel, I make a motion that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
Move to combine all personnel.
Second, motion and a second, to combine all personnel. Are there any questions from anyone at the table? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to business, we'll just do item number one, recommendation to approve the 2015-16 board meeting dates as presented, and I just wanted to make note on that draft, that there is one September date that was altered due to Yom Kippur. And I also wanted to point out that we don't have two June dates listed, which has been the tradition. However, it seems like we almost always need a second date, and I just wanted to point out and ask you whether or not you would like that second date listed on your calendar.
I was kind of wondering whether we could flip it and have one in August and two in June, just because, you're right, we always need a second meeting in June, but couldn't we just do one?
I don't know, Dave, we're pretty busy in August, aren't we? We're doing, we're doing a lot of the hiring and purchasing. So, I mean, it's up to you, but.
I'm just asking, not, you know, not requiring, just wondering, because there's a lot of vacations in August, so, so that's, that's the rationale behind my asking question. But, I mean, if we have a quorum, it's fine. But, you know, I know I won't be able to make the twelfth meeting, for example. Oh, and I don't mind coming on Yom Kippur, for what it's worth, so. Actually, board meetings are more enjoyable than high holy day services there, I said.
Do we have a motion or second? I lost my train of thought with that one, Rick. So, so moved. Second motion, is there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
We're, we're going to go back, are we ready to go back to, oh, okay, never mind. We're going to skip items two through eight, because those require some discussion. So moving on to budget item number, business item, sorry, number nine, I recommend that you authorize the administration to prepare the final budget transfers for the 2014-15, and present them for approval by October 31st, 2015.
Motion, second, I was just reading, can, can we approve the rest of business up till number twenty-nine?
Could I, could I ask that you hold on number seventeen, I'd like to speak to you about that separately.
We'll take seventeen out, and then we'll go all the way through twenty-nine. Well, twenty-eight, up to twenty-eight. Okay. Yep, take your time.
Nine through twenty-eight, without number seventeen.
So then we would go to twenty-seven, so twenty-eight would be the next one.
Okay.
Yes.
Go to twenty-seven, maybe?
Could we pull out number thirteen, please, too?
Twenty-seven, thirteen, motion to second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All right, let's go back to thirteen.
I recommend that you approve the 2015-16 bids as presented.
Second, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, that by, I asked a question of the administration on this one, and this actually represents a savings, as compared with last year. It's a small savings, but it is about five thousand dollars, by my recollection. The only reason I pulled it out was so that I could say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All those in favor? Aye. Seventeen?
Recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into the agreement with Apple as presented.
Can I, can I just speak to that, please? Before you move on it?
Sure.
In conversation with Jamie Doyle, as we went through the bond financing that you're going to hear about later, the question arose about whether or not we were able to obtain tax-exempt financing for this Apple lease this year, due to the number of financings we've taken under our program this year. So I've requested of Apple to give us a price on a taxable lease. It'll have a little bit more interest on it, but we've made a covenant in our bonds that we've issued already, that says we cannot borrow more than ten million dollars in a taxable capacity. So, what I would like to recommend is if you give me authorization to execute a lease with an annual lease payment not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that should be more than sufficient to cover any increase in interest rate. I don't have the document, this just came up over the weekend. So I don't have the information to be able to move on it, but we'll need to have the computers in place for the beginning of school, so we can't really wait till August.
So the reason to do this is so that we can actually do the lease? Otherwise, we don't have the funds to do it as an alternative?
It loses your tax-free financing, and so you, you're, you're taking advantage of using that toward the other bond issues.
As opposed to the tax-free, you get a lease. You've got a choice, but this seems to be the appropriate way of doing it.
This is a shorter-term lease, and the lower, lower amount borrowed, so it has lower interest rate risk.
So even though the amount that we'd be authorizing is higher than the amount that's presented in the agenda, ultimately, it saves money?
The choice would be to have our bond carry a higher interest rate, on nine million dollars, instead of a lease bearing a little bit higher interest rate.
The advantage of our curriculum is, the advantage you get is, you, when you're under the cap, you get tax-free financing. So that makes it more attractive to whoever your lender is, Apple or the bondholders. And so you've used up your tax-free finances, you're essentially on your financing, which Dave is pointing out, your long-term financing gives you a greater benefit than this. Now, this does cost you more. I mean, Dave asked me for up to maybe eleven thousand dollars more, but I don't know what choice you have, except to not take the bond money.
Okay. And then, this replaces a previous lease? How much was the previous lease?
About a hundred thousand.
So, so we're really just continuing, from a budget perspective, a payment that we have been making for the previous few years? It's not a, a hundred thousand dollar increase?
No, that's been our practice, yes.
Fine, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, we didn't? Okay, so moved. Second, all right. Motion to second, any other questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to twenty-eight A, I recommend the, that you authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with Creative Health Services Incorporated as presented.
I have a question on that, or maybe some verification.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Just so I'm clear on this, for Creative Health Services for this, this year, it was eighteen thousand dollars with it being subsidized. Next year it won't be, so it'll be an additional forty-nine thousand for us? Like, it won't be subsidized next year, the way I was reading it in the actions. Like, it won't be subsidized next year, the way I was reading it in the actions.
Just looking here, because we have different things that we use them for. Dave, just to clarify, it's Q on your news and notes, is that for the counselor, the counseling services that we're subsidizing, or is that for the other services that we have?
The second paragraph in there was an error that was on another contract that we had previously, that mustn't have gotten deleted from the news and notes, I apologize. It's $18,000 this year, it's $18,000 we anticipate going forward.
We do different things with Creative Health. This is for SAP. The other thing that we were talking about prior was for the crisis counselor that we use at the middle school.
Good catch, Patty.
Actually, thank you also, because I was gonna ask the same question, and even though it's out of order, I realize we approved something that I had wanted to mention, and that is, we approved occupational therapy services from La Presiosa, and I just wanted to say that I've had personal experience with Tracy La Presiosa and her staff, and they are wonderful, excellent people, and I'm glad that we approved that, because they do a lot of good in a very professional manner for our students in Potsgrove, so, there.
All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to 28B, I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with the academy as presented.
So moved. Motion to second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Recommend that you authorize the administration to purchase IPTV system from ACT as presented.
If you could just clarify, just for the people, what we're voting on?
This is a video distribution system, which will be installed at the high school to allow the television production program to broadcast its TV programs across the internet to other classrooms within the school. It will also allow us to distribute TV signal not only to the high school, but to all of our schools through the use of our Intranet. So, this is an impact not just for the high school, but for the entire district.
Would this enable us to broadcast our board meetings as an alternative to the fine work that's done by PCTV?
Yes, is the answer. Recall, when we had the conversation about televising board meetings, I said that we did not yet have the facility to do that. This is the framework for that capability. What we need, if you were talking about, if you were talking about live streaming, that would be an additional piece of equipment, which would not be terribly expensive, we're not, that isn't what this is specifically, but the short answer to the question is yes.
I'm just wondering, because that would represent some ROI on the investment. Obviously, we're paying money, not a whole lot of money, but money for the PCTV service, and we would also then also, I assume, get some benefit for our students, right?
Absolutely, and if we had decided to simply put back in place what existed in the high school before the renovation, which was coax cable, and I think I explained in some of my communication that it's just not done anymore, but in addition to that, there would have been cost to, for the end, you know, for the encoders and the cable and pulling the cable, so that might have been $40,000, $50,000 for that technology. So, I think we're getting a lot more, we're getting a district resource. But again, the vision, and I also mentioned this in one of my communications, is this builds the foundation, and then next year, we'll plan within my operating budget to provide a mobile unit that we can actually take on location, plug into any of our ports, and then stream remotely from any location in the district. So, that's kind of a larger vision.
Dave, can you, for the sake of the public, explain how we're handling this from a budget perspective?
When we initially envisioned this project, we envisioned utilizing the capital reserve fund to fund the project. However, due to the board's moratorium on capital, non-emergency capital expenditures, we feel this is the classic example of a one-time expenditure, which we could use our fund balance to fund. So, this would, at this point, the recommendation is to fund it through the general fund fund balance in the upcoming school year.
That would be using some of the surplus money, just to be clear, that we received this year to cover this, rather than dipping into additional taxpayer money to cover it.
All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize, approve the change order to enhance the lighting configuration in the television studio as presented.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed above.
Second. Any questions, comments from anyone? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the payment of invoices listed above for the middle school cooling project, tower project.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to education, I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as presented.
Motion to second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Recommend that you approve the new textbook titles as presented.
Motion to second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Recommend that you approve the grading guidelines recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Motion and a second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Posed?
I recommend that you approve the day camps as presented.
So moved. Motion to second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the following, oh, another day camp, wrestling mini camp as presented.
Second, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the miscellaneous item as submitted, and I'm gonna refrain from releasing that name, to be named after the announcement to the two candidates that interviewed, if the board knows the name.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Receiving of the accounts?
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
Motion to second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices the amount of $3,796,914.40 for May 2015 as presented.
Motion and a second, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the treasury report for May 2015 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion and a second, are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
And then, going back, before we go back to the business items that are listed, we wanted to talk about two things, one, a refinancing opportunity, and that coupled with a budget update discussion. So, I'm gonna ask that Mrs. Doyle come forward and talk with us about that refinancing opportunity for...
So, you should each have a document with a green cover that contains the results of your sale process, and we saw an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to try a slightly different process in order to secure tonight's results, and that was to do an RFP to various banks. We ran the list by your business administrator to make sure we had all your local banks on, as well as all the PFM contact banks, and this was a function of a couple of things. Your issue was very short, it was kind of the right size, and it was bank-qualified and tax-exempt, as you talked about a little bit earlier, so it was something that banks would be very, very interested in, and it was a no-harm-no-foul kind of thing. If we wouldn't have gotten a good bank loan proposals, you know, we would have still done the bond issue as we had originally anticipated. Another reason we thought this would be a good avenue to check out is today is the first day of the two-day Federal Reserve Committee meeting, and, you know, even though, you know, they probably won't increase short-term interest rates, they won't make that announcement until 2 o'clock tomorrow, but a lot of times, when those meetings are going on and we're getting close to that possibly happening, investors kind of freeze, and it's not necessarily the best day to be in the bond market today, so that also factored into the process that we undertook a couple of weeks ago. So, if you look at page one of my handout, you'll see, just like the prior times I was here this year, long-term fixed interest rates are still well below historic averages. They have ticked up a little bit during the month of March and June here so far, albeit we had a good week last week and so far this week, so that was all good news to this final refunding opportunity for you for this year. If you look at page two, this is the important page. We got responses back from seven different banks. The best bank loan proposal came from BB&amp;T Bank. They bid a fixed interest rate of 1.93% for the entire seven-year term that we were asking for. It has no rate resets in it, so there's no variables, therefore, we did not need a cap rate. They bid a bank fee of $2,000. It is prepayable on any scheduled payment date in $100,000 increments, beginning February 15th of 2019, so that's about a three-and-a-half-year call date. If we would have done bonds, we would have had a five-year call date, so from that perspective, comparing, it's a little bit better. And most importantly, the savings on this BB&amp;T proposal, net to the school district, came in at $526,697. So, two things I would point out there, that's about $140,000 better than we had projected in January, so we're very pleased with that proposal. And you'll see a box near the bottom left-hand corner, when we compare the BB&amp;T proposal to the bond market at the time when we got these proposals in, the bond market only generated savings of about $512,000, so BB&amp;T's proposal was slightly better than the bond market at that point in time, so it worked exactly as we had hoped it would, and we are recommending that you accept the BB&amp;T proposal this evening. Just to walk quickly through the mechanics, on page three, you'll see your 2010 bonds, so if you did nothing, you keep making the payments on page three. Page four is the portion of the 2010 bonds that we're proposing to refund. We're not refunding all of them, because we want to stay below that magic $10 million calendar year limit to get the lower bank-qualified tax-exempt rates. On page five, you'll see the small unrefunded portion, if that makes sense to refund in calendar year 2016 or any time thereafter, I would be in touch with you about that, but it's the very shortest end that we left outstanding. Page six just shows how much money we need to call the refunded portion on their first optional redemption date, which is October 15th of 2015. And page seven, again, illustrates the savings that I shared with you, at the BB&amp;T, 1.93% that you see in column three. You can see, at the top of column 10, you would recognize the bulk of the savings, about $523,600 in the upcoming '15-'16 fiscal year, and then a couple hundred dollars each year thereafter. Historic benchmark is you want to save at least net 2%, and the savings came in at 5.39%, so very, very attractive savings level. You see the state share in that box at the bottom right-hand corner is already netted out of that. The sources and uses of funds appear on page eight, and so you'll see on a bank loan such as this, there are less cost of issuance. Basically, you don't need a credit rating, you don't need bond insurance, you don't need an underwriter's discount, you don't need some of the things you're used to seeing on there for a bond issue, and that factors into that true interest cost when we compare this to the bond market, because, you know, the bond market typically has a lower interest rate but higher fees associated with it. The bank loan world has a higher interest rate but lower fees, so they offset one another, and we take all that into account when we estimate the savings. There in the middle of the page, if you accept the BB&amp;T proposal, this evening's settlement would occur on August 11th, and that box labeled "yield of the issue," that's the rate we would report to the IRS. You would effectively be refinancing this portion of your debt portfolio at just under 1.93%. Page nine, you'll see your updated debt portfolio, so the payments in column three on your 2010 bonds are adjusted to subtract the refunded portion, and you see the remaining portion in column three, and we've added column eight to reflect the BB&amp;T bank note that you're considering this evening. The last pages are the actual RFP term sheet that we used when we solicited the proposals from the banks, and the final three pages are the actual BB&amp;T proposal, with a place for your signature if you accept their proposal this evening, which, again, I do recommend that you in fact do that. I know that was a ton of information, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time, and once again, I would really like to thank your administration for making it easy to work with them and their flexibility in changing the competitive method that we used in this case to secure these excellent results.
I just want to thank you for looking out for us like this. The savings, from what you would have done in the bond market, aren't astronomical, but any savings are good, so, you know, I have some questions for Dave about the budget impact, but I'm guessing that that's gonna come up in his budget update, so, thank you once again.
My pleasure.
The proper action now would be, and you can do it in one motion, is to accept the proposal from the bank at the same time, pass the resolution, hand it out. You're getting to be pros at this, we've done this three times in, I think, the last six or seven months. I'm gonna spare you the punishment of me going through the resolution, as I usually do. I will only tell you that it is very similar to the other resolutions, but actually simpler, because you don't have SEC reporting requirements. It's actually, believe it or not, notwithstanding the width, is a trimmed-down version of the borrowing resolution. So, the motion would be to accept the proposal from, help me, Jamie, what's the name of the bank? Thank you. And the resolution authorizing the borrowing in the amount of $9,999,000.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Other than special thank you to PFM and Ms. Doyle, every time we see, you bring us good news.
And your punishment will be along with Diane's, as you know from prior occasions, is getting some carpool signing, all the documents afterwards.
All those in favor? Aye.
Hey, now, Dave's gonna give us a budget update.
Okay. I'm sure this will surprise Rick, but I'm gonna say it anyway. These are one-time funds that we just heard about, one-time savings, so while we're saving $523,000 in the upcoming fiscal year, which has not been reflected in our budget, because we just got the information yesterday, those funds will return to the budget in the following year. So, we're getting, we're saving $500,000 this year, but next year, the debt service is gonna be back where it was. So, if we utilize that $500,000, that will cause us a rise in expenditures next year for debt service.
No, that didn't surprise me.
I know, I know. So, we will have the ability to have a discussion on that, we can discuss the use of those funds now or at a future date. The bottom line is, it's good news, and we saved $526,000, of which the vast majority of it comes up in the upcoming fiscal year. of which the vast majority of it comes up in the upcoming fiscal year. That being said, I've been juggling some papers around. Here we go. In your news and notes, I had provided you with three scenarios based on our discussions at our last meeting. Once again, it did not incorporate these revenues that we just, or this reduction in expenditures that we just learned of. The first scenario provided for the use of $200,000 of fund balance to offset the expenditures in excess of the $750,000 that was planned to be used as part of our Peasars' reserve. We reduced property taxes accordingly, and this would result, if this option were selected, it would result in a tax increase of .38 mils or 1.02% increase. The cost of that for the average taxpayer, again, with an assessed value of $120,000, would be approximately $46 more this year. In addition, I prepared a scenario where we added an additional $100,000 of revenue from the state, which, as we all know, the state budget has not been passed. They seem to be starting to talk about it, at least at this point in time. So that's an encouraging sign. But whether it's done by June 30th, or July 31st, or September, we don't know. So if we were to add $100,000 in state revenue, that would be able to reduce our tax increase from the .38 mils to .285 mils, and would lower our tax increase for the year to .76%. The average cost to the average homeowner would be $34 in that scenario. And finally, the request was to bring in a proposal at roughly a half a percent. And how we achieved that was by, again, budgeting the use of $200,000 of fund balance, adding $100,000 of state revenue, and deferring the purchase of a bus, which is approximately $80,000. That would reduce our tax increase to .2 mils, which yields a .55% tax increase, or an average cost to the taxpayer of about $24. So we have presented those options for your consideration. I know we've had some give and take over the weekend on some questions. Guess we're looking for some direction from the board as to where we'd like to go. Eventually, I mean, we'd hope to leave here tonight with a budget, if we could possibly do so.
How much more money would it take to, in either anticipated revenues or cuts, to take that .55% in scenario three down to zero?
Approximately $205,000.
So if we assume $200,000 from the state, as you had, we had originally talked about before that number was suggested to be reduced, that, what does that lower us to?
An additional $100,000 would, excuse me, result in the savings of about .27%. So it would take our .55 down to about a .28.
And then the remainder is about $105,000 from there, either in cuts for spending or in revenue, correct?
Correct.
Or assuming a deficit?
That would be just using more fund balance. I guess you need to judge your comfort level with the number of unknowns that you're addressing right now. We have the unknown of the state budget. We have the unknown of the teacher's contract. And as I indicated to you in the email over the weekend, you had the unknown in that we've really been working hard in tightening up the budget so that there's not as much variation. So if we tightened up, as you squeeze and squeeze and squeeze, at some point, you go past, and you have a negative. So while we've been able to have surpluses every year, and I appreciate that, there is the possibility that we hit the target or may have gone too far, too aggressive in some of our assumptions as well.
I'm glad you brought that up. Do you have a sense yet for whether there will be a surplus or deficit for this budget year?
We budgeted a deficit. And while I'm not certain the deficit will be as large as it was budgeted, I do expect a deficit for this year. It's hard to say because we really don't have all of our revenue numbers, and we won't have them until the end of August. So there's a lot of flexibility that can still happen before everything's said and done.
Well, despite the risks, I still feel strongly that this is going to be the one and only year in our history as a board since 2001 that we could get to 0%. Our neighbors have done it. Pottstown did it. Phoenixville did it with more ambitious estimates than, from the state than we're making. And I strongly, strongly believe that it is the right thing to do. And the additional $500,000 savings, while only being one time, adds to the over $2 million in fund balance that is being added to our budget this year. And adding an additional $200,000 or cutting something else in combination would be so huge for the taxpayers of this community that I actually want to make a motion to recommend a 0% budget. So how do I do that with these?
How do you?
Adopt a real estate tax of 0 mils per, I mean, what do I need to do?
Well, I guess I need some clarification on how we're going to get there. Are we going to use more fund balance? What are we going to, are we going to cut something?
We're going to assume $100,000 from the state, and we're going to take another $105,000 in fund balance. Up the state to 200, lose the one bus, as was proposed in scenario three, and take it in fund balance. The other $105,000.
So you said $200,000, you're looking at scenario three, right? You're basing it. And we, okay, so 200, I just want to go through the numbers again.
Sure.
So actually, in fund balance, you're saying 305?
Yes.
Okay. And 200, another, you're assuming another $100,000 from the state?
Correct.
You do know that budget got passed down unanimously?
No, that was a purely political move, and it means nothing right now.
On whose part? The governor's own party?
There was more to it than just that budget. So, you know, what's going to be decided by the state has not been decided. And the governor has to sign it. So we still don't have clarity from what the, from the state as to what they're going to do. Do we have clarity, Dave?
No, and that would be why I would be hesitant to take more fund balance or add more state revenue.
The worst-case scenario here is that they don't come through, and $2.5 million in fund balance has to be used, an extra $200,000 of it. That is the worst-case scenario.
And, but, I think where we're going to disagree here is, do we want a 0% tax increase this year and potentially a 2.5%, 3% tax increase next year? Double what you could have done. So I think generally, the community has preferred to, as opposed to whopping the people with a tax increase, you know, even after coming after zero, to even out. I'd rather, personally, I'd rather pay a smaller amount this year and a smaller amount this year than nothing this year. And all, I mean, that's more detrimental to someone who's budgeting than it is to someone who's getting a very large increase the very next year.
There are a lot of variables that have yet to be decided from the state beyond the ones that we're discussing. And though you are right, that is a risk. I think that this community needs 0% now. And, you know, I've made the motion. If I don't get a second, or if I do get a second, you can vote against it.
Thank you. Yes.
My feeling is that even if we achieved a 0%, whatever raise next year will immediately be forgotten because people hate tax increases. And I know human nature. And while I think it's a good thing to go as low as we can go, I've seen it play out time and time again where no matter how good of a thing you do previous, it's forgotten when the rate increase comes the following year. That's just my observation. You can take it for what it's worth.
Also, the chance that with a 0% increase, our economy will continue to recover, and our revenue will increase. Some people call it supply-side economics, and...
It's time to appeal to my heart. It's pulling my heartstrings.
And while, once again, we cannot predict that, what we can say for sure is if we don't do it, then supply-side will not come into being. By the way, Springfield passed 1.1, I think, yes, 1.2, which was down significantly from what they were projecting. Everybody is trying to go as low as possible.
For what it's worth, scenario three would be the fourth lowest tax increase in the county. There's two zeros and there's a .39.
And did our neighbors pass their budget yet at Pottstown?
I believe so.
They passed that at zero? I mean, I'm not comfortable with the unknowns from the state. I'm comfortable with the good financial accountability that we've had in the district. Relying on the state is throwing that hard work out the window. I mean, if they don't come through, you know, it puts us in, and let's just be honest, I won't be here. Matter of fact, a lot of people won't be here. But, I mean, I've got to say something to say, hey, I don't want to hand you a mess either, budgetary-wise, in the future. You know, I strongly feel as though zero might sound good, and it might be expedient to do, but it might not be the most responsible thing for the district to do.
So I'd be the first to say, I'm not a politician. So most of what you two just said went right over my head. But what I'm not comfortable with is making bets with other people's money. I'm not under the understanding that that's what I've been asked to do. I'm under the understanding, what I've been asked to do is to try to drive the costs of running this district down, not to make a decision how much we bet on state funding or any other issue that we can't predict. So while you guys might follow that more than I do, maybe your bets are more educated, they're still bets. I will say that I looked at the budget worksheet that Dave prepared for us, which is what we asked him to do. We all agreed to ask him to do that. He took the time to do it. I highlighted the things that I thought we should consider and talk about here, and I got zero feedback, other than Dave's feedback about instrument purchases. Instead, we want to come here and battle smoke and mirrors and so you can talk more pretty about state politics. And in my opinion, we don't belong predicting state politics. We belong working on what goes on in this district, and nobody's done it.
Just to be clear, Matt, that's what I've been saying the entire time, is that we can't concentrate on the state.
And I'm agreeing.
Okay.
Okay, that that's not where we should be making this happen. I also will say, I'm not fixated on 0%. I know that that's some kind of, you know, gold standard, and that's fine. But if we got, if we have to get to 0% by doing things that are irresponsible, then I'm not fixated on 0%. What I'm fixated on is spending our money in the best way possible and getting the most return on our dollar and being responsible with the money that we know we have. And, you know, I still don't think that we've taken enough time to talk about that. And again, I'm not putting this on the admin, absolutely not. They've done a bunch of work, and we've done nothing with it. That's my feeling, except talk. And I wasn't trying to get every single thing I highlighted in that list cut. I was just trying to spawn some conversation, and it didn't happen. And I'm disappointed because there was a lot more time spent on shenanigans these last couple of weeks than there was working on this budget. And we will continue to fail if that continues to happen. So that's why I think that we're barking up the wrong tree when we're deciding to bet on with this community's money, not our own.
Well, I mean, personally, just looking at even your email that you sent, which you went through and highlighted, you know, different items. The reason why I didn't, other than sunshine law, but engage in a conversation about...
Justin, you're a hypocrite to mention sunshine law.
Don't showboat in a meeting and then be different outside the meeting.
Okay, well, I'll respond to you with that then. I was expecting, I wasn't expecting full dialogue in response to your email. I read it. I looked at your suggestions. I expected that we would bring it up as part of the discussion tonight. I don't appreciate you blasting us for not responding to everything that you said in the email.
I didn't want a response to the email. I want to talk about it tonight, and we're down the rabbit hole of state politics.
I'm glad to talk about it, but please don't take a shot at us for not responding to it in an email and making...
I didn't ask for a response to the email.
But that's what you just inferred, that you didn't get a response.
I'm talking about right here now.
Oh, right now?
We're down the rabbit hole of state politics and not what we should be...
Well, okay, then I misunderstood.
If I can finish my hypocritical statement. What I wanted to say was, I didn't feel as though we needed to take away from anything that was proposed in order to achieve what was presented. We can come within one of the lowest tax increases, increases that we've historically had in this district and still do replacing a tenor saxophone, I think, was on the...
Baritone saxophone.
A baritone saxophone, or whatever. So that was my point. Ricky made a motion. Is there a second to Rick's motion?
Can I make one more comment, please?
Everyone can do as they please.
Matt, how much would you recommend that we cut from that equipment purchase in order to reduce the bet and achieve some additional savings?
If we need to find the other $105,000 there, then that's where we need to find it. Otherwise, we can't have it. What I'm saying is, I don't think that zero is the goal. I think that 100% responsible is the goal. And if that takes us to .5 or 1... And if that takes us to .5 or 1, it's still better than we have been doing, we've done a lot of work to get there. If we can't get to zero responsibly, then we can't get to zero.
Well, I'm not sure I'm completely in agreement with you about it being irresponsible, to the extent that, that we have a great deal of fund balance that has come to us this year, and an additional large amount that will shortly be coming next year from healthcare savings. This is money that came from the taxpayers, and what I'm suggesting is that we use a portion of it in the worst-case scenario to, to give our taxpayers some relief. In the best-case scenario, the state comes through with a myriad of, of items that are on its agenda, and we don't need to cut into that fund balance significantly. That's, if $2.5 million, if we, if we used an extra $200,000 a year for the next five years, that would be, still be only a million dollars of that money. So in my mind, it's not irresponsible. But the only reason I didn't include a cut from that area is, is my feeling that, that it would be likely to fail. So I'd be happy to have my motion revised, if that's allowed, to account for-
We don't even, we don't have a second.
If there's a second, then there can be a motion to amend, or you can withdraw the motion and make a new one.
Matt, I am scrolling through your list that you compiled, again, for the second time, and I just want to say, that was a lot of work, a lot of effort went into that. I, I think it needs to be looked at. You went through the effort, you went through all that work, let's discuss it. You know, I'm hearing both sides. I came in here with the wanting to zero, and I still would like to zero, but there's a lot of conversation going on here. You know, what did we do last year when the budget wasn't passed from the state? How did that roll out? Just out of the top of my head, I don't know.
We had a, we had a, a little bit more information last year. They had had some realistic conversations, and we had a direction in which they were going. We budgeted at the end of last year, the one thing we didn't know was whether or not the state was going to approve the Ready to Learn Block Grant. So what we did was, we put, we reck, we budgeted an additional $300,000 of revenue and an offsetting expense in our fund transfer. And we had a plan for how to use the Ready to Learn Block Grant money if it came from the state. Okay? So basically, we had a placeholder expense and a placeholder revenue that offset each other. We didn't budget an increase for a tax savings as a result of it. Okay? What we got, we then moved into the revenue line, and we implemented our plan for use. This year, what's being proposed is just add revenue without an offsetting expense. So if that revenue doesn't come, then that's a short, that's additional, an additional deficit. Yes.
This is by far the most difficult thing we're going to do, okay, for us who are sitting on the board now, and for those who are coming onto the board. Rick, I, you know, we talked, I understand the zero. You know, I have a place about it because of what happened to me, and I know for some people, any increase would be devastating for some people. We have three scenarios, and I'll tell you right now, the first and second one is a little too much for me, the third one is a, a better. We also looked at a 2 point, a .28 there by raising the budget up from the state. Tell me again, if the state doesn't come through with the money, where does it put us? In your recollection?
Dave could certainly answer that better, but, but I want to refresh everybody's memory about the additional funds that we've received. We received $400,000 in funds from Plan Con approximately, it's a little bit less, but for the sake of easy math. We, we have a surplus from the previous year's budget of $700,000. We saved a couple of hundred thousand dollars from, from a previous, or, excuse me, we received back a couple of hundred thousand dollars from the Ringing Rocks, although that has to go to the capital fund, because that's where it came from.
For correction, that has not been received yet.
But it will be received, right?
At some point, yes.
During the year? Okay. We have a healthcare fund balance of 1.5 million dollars, and no, we have not voted to refund ourselves, because we've been waiting for the final recommendation. But, but Dave, do we have any reason to believe that ultimately we won't be taking that 1.5 million dollars out of the healthcare reserve?
The recommendation last year by the auditor was to transfer that to capital reserve.
Recommendation was to return the money to some other players, because it wasn't needed in the healthcare reserve anymore.
The recommendation was to transfer it to capital reserve.
However-
To, to offset one-time expenditures.
However, it's no longer needed in the healthcare reserve-
That is correct.
So it is an additional 1.5 million dollars. So 1.5 plus 7 plus 4 is 2.5 million dollars. And then there have been some other savings along the way as well, that are one-time in nature. In addition to tonight, we found out about 525,000 additional dollars in one-time savings, which brings that amount to 3 million dollars. And so while I would agree that cutting spending would be a preferable alternative, and in exact session, I have proposed some cuts that I don't wish to speak about here. And in addition to that, Matt has proposed some potential cuts from our equipment purchases. Honestly, I don't really care how we get there, a, a cutting is better, I agree. But the worst-case scenario, if the state does not come through with additional funds, is that it's going to take a pretty long time for, for us to run out of this additional funds. Now, yes, I agree that some of this needs to go into capital reserve, and once we put it there, we can access it for any other purpose other than capital projects, but it's a lot of money, and we still have a fair amount of money in capital reserve. Let's not forget that there's over 5 million dollars in the capital reserve fund. So, I don't know if I answered your question, John, but, thank you.
Is there a second to Rick's motion? No. So .76 keeps the bus. Dave, if we were to reduce the, put, put off the bus, or defer the bus purchase just out of that, instead of all of scenario three, what does that do?
Say that again?
So, well, doesn't it assume more from the state in scenario three? No?
Scenario three is cut the bus.
Okay. So are we in agreement that we can defer a bus?
If, if, if it makes a difference, if the board, I, I think the third bus is important to keep our replacement cycle intact. If one is purchased out of capital reserve, and two are purchased out of the general fund, if that is enough to get consensus, and the board's willing to do that, that would be an option.
So if we were to stick with the bus and .76, we drew it to .5, okay? In, in light of the information that we had with the bond issue, and I know it's a one-time thing, but we don't want to be insensitive to the fact that we just, you know, took an half million dollars. So if we were at .5, where would that leave us as far as the increase and with leaving the bus? .5? So, go ahead.
I guess how much is the bus worth? Because that's how much more we'd have to take out of reserve.
That's-
$80,000.
Okay.
If we take one out of the capital and take two out, essentially, we do in scenario three, and one bus would come out of the capital, and we still get three buses.
Correct. Various conversations.
Sorry.
It's okay. Good.
That brings it to .5, correct.
.5.
It's effectively scenario three by, but it's shifting funds and getting the third bus.
Right. Using funds that we accounted for, okay?
I can look at that.
Is that your motion?
That is.
You change. Second.
Well-
It's scenario three.
Three, C.
Original scenario three.
We have a motion, a second, are there any questions, comments?
Just one question I'm really concerned with is the teachers' contract. Do we have enough in there for the teachers' contract, which is then-
We, we don't have, we don't have a contract, so we don't know.
Nobody knows the answer to that.
Nobody knows the answer.
No answer to that question. You don't have a contract, so you don't know what it'll cost.
We have to have money for the teachers' contract, is basically what I'm saying. Somehow we have to have money for the teachers. I'm concerned.
I'm, I'm, we do have a budgeted number in mind-
Right.
Within this figure, correct.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries.